Okay. All right, I'm gonna be on the phone, just that's why it looks like maybe the ID dropped. Uh, on the meeting ID, it should be seven, seven, oh, six. And it shows seven, seven, oh, so that may be the problem for those of you trying to dial in. The link works.
Use the link. Or email us at you. You should.
What is that noise? Be your phone now. Are you getting audio on your computer but not? Yeah. That's something like you're getting a mic off. Are you hearing us on your computer? And your mic mixer must be turned off. So what you wanna do is turn down the volume on your computer and go back to your phone if you need to. Okay, can you hear me now? Yeah. Let me pull my mic up for more volume up here. Six, eight, two, is that better? Gotcha.
Okay.
All right. Hi, Mayor, we're at six thirty, uh, so, uh, we'll go ahead and, you wanna get it going?
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, Don.
Yeah.
We're working off of the packets that you sent to us on Monday.
Yes, sir. Well, you should've gotten your packet, uh... Yeah, that would've been it. There was an ascend, um, so there was no, nothing more than just a notice on that.
On your video just froze up on us.
Okay.
It's not... That's amazing, you're not even...
Salado, River Board of Alderman Meeting, Salado Municipal Building, three oh one North Stagecoach, Salado, Texas, twenty seventh, twenty twenty, time is six thirty-one PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor, let the record stand, all members are present.
Record stands, such. It is our heads for prayer. To the God that you pray for too. If you feel comfortable, say your prayer silently. Amen. Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with justice for all. Okay. The next thing that generally, um, comes is citizens' comments, it's very difficult to do that. Uh, but if you would like to call in, we'll try to take them at a later time. We certainly want you to know that, um, your comments are important to us. Number two, the consent agenda, Agenda A, approval of minutes of the regular Board of Alderman Meeting of April the second, twenty twenty. Approval of minutes of the Special Board of Alderman Meeting of April the sixth, twenty twenty. Approval of the March twentieth financial statements for the Village of Salado. I'll entertain a motion that those be approved.
Mayor, I believe you may be working on a different agenda. The only item on the consent agenda is approval of the minutes of the last meeting.
There you're right, go ahead and use that one. Read it, Don.
Okay, it is basically, uh... Consent agenda is approval of the minutes of the regular Board of Alderman Meeting of April sixteenth, twenty twenty.
That's what mine says too. I'll entertain a motion, please. If they be accepted or approved.
Move that we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Village Administrator, Administrators' report, Don.
Mayor, if possible, we'd like, before I go into my report, if it's possible to move Agenda Item five A up the top as our...
Five A is discussed and considered possible action regarding the appointment of a member to the Village of Salado Economic Development Advisory Board, Don.
Yes, sir, as you know, we have a, a couple of vacancies still to fill on this particular board. Uh, Bruce Gordon has submitted his application. Uh, we've already appointed, uh, three members to that board. Uh, Mr. Gordon, if he's appointed tonight, will be number four, and then we still have a couple more positions to fill. That said, Mr. Gordon has submitted his application, and his resume is in your packet tonight, and, uh, as is, uh, your direction, you have the opportunity to meet these individuals and to, uh, maybe ask them some questions, and, and Mr. Gordon has joined us, uh, and we're glad he's here, uh, and he's available for your questions and comments tonight, Mayor.
Hi, Mr. Gordon, how are you?
Good, I hope everybody's hearing my voice after all, uh, connection problems.
Yeah, it's a whole different ballgame when you do Zoom.
It sure is.
Well, tell us a little bit about yourself, please.
All right, um, I'm a resident here in Salado since, uh, the end of two thousand and four. My career brought me here. Uh, uh, part of the Veterans Administration, I was the, I think the proper term or the term most people would know is the CEO of the VA hospitals in Temple, Waco, and Marlin, uh, we had a term that we called Director. Uh, but that brought me to the community, uh, I spent the last four years of a thirty-five year career at Temple. Uh, when I retired in two thousand and eight, went to work for Scott and White as the, uh, Senior Vice President for Operations, well, good Val Knight and other frickin' people there. And then, uh, when Baylor bought out Scott and White back in two thousand and thirteen, uh, I joined, uh, an organization, a company that actually was contracted back to the VA, and we, I spent the next, uh, couple of years going into various VA hospitals, helping them get business plans put together, um, trying to get some activity going, uh, that was other than doom and gloom, and, uh, have enjoyed that quite a bit, uh, they're at a point where they wanna renew contracts. I think I'm probably not going to continue down that path. I've always enjoyed being a part of the community that I'm with. Uh, have some experience, uh, in a previous community, uh, on the city council, a community called East Hampton, Massachusetts, town of about fifteen thousand. I also served as a Chair of the School Board for that community during that period of time. So I, I've enjoyed it, I have found, um, um, with God's blessings, a chance to contribute, and I'm hoping I have a chance to do that again here in Salado. I, I have the time, I have the energy, I believe I could make a commitment to you that, uh, you would hopefully find rewarding. So, so that might be, uh, a sketch, glad to give you any kinda detail you're curious about, um, and answer any question that you might have.
I'll turn that over to the Board of Alderman and let me ask your questions or comment as they desire.
Yeah, yes, sir, this is Alderman Cole, I have one basic question for you.
Um...
What you've noticed in the past about Salado's economic growth? What would be your first move to get us up and going?
Hey, well, from that question, let me make a, a little bit of a, a, a comment on what, what it sounds like we would be. I am not familiar with the history of a Economic Development Committee in Salado, so, so I'm not sure if this is brand new, or if in fact, uh, there's been a track record, uh, that, uh, we can look back upon. Uh, my interest, uh, is probably, I hate to put a label on it, but I, I think that's probably what you're looking for. Uh, I would be a growth candidate, i- if that's a term that you'll allow me to use. Um, having taken, uh, and having lived in a small community and, and most of the assignments I had with the VA, uh, I've found, uh, that the city's struggle, um, often had good intentions, but they didn't have good structure. Uh, so my hope would be that, uh, if it exists now, that I could participate with the process. I could, uh, bring some structure, uh, to the notion of economic development, uh, that could then begin to address, identify, uh, any interest groups that have to be intended with. Uh, I think there's probably a great deal to be learned from some of our communities nearby areas, be it Temple, Hilton, um, Gerald, that, that growth, and that learning may not always be positive, but certainly something that you do every time you, you experience something, you do, learn something from. So, so my hope would be that, uh, as a, as a member of this board, that I could participate with that and, and structure back community, I, I will know if they're gonna be looking for a particular five-year plan. The first year, um, I'm sorry, I hope you're hearing me okay, there's a lot of feedback.
Yeah, I hear you, I hear you.
Okay, that the first year might be simply, uh, the notion, the board together, and developing a basic outline, typically, uh, learning who all the players are, the role that you anticipate the city can play, the role that you anticipate the, um, the Alderman to play, and so forth, uh, will take a little bit of time. I, I believe that's how I would approach the whole situation.
Okay, thank you, then, one last question for you, sir, do you think Salado was unique to any other city as far as economic growth problems?
Um, I wouldn't say it's unique, or in, in the sense that Salado is one of a kind. Uh, I think Salado probably is experiencing many of the same kinda questions and challenges that communities all throughout the United States, um, and I would probably draw it back to experiences I had in Massachusetts, uh, before that, in California before that, and some of the other assignments. Um, there will be variations for challenges, um, there will be, um, a community might have a very strong, uh, historical group, and another might not quite have the same. A city might have a very strong group that, uh, wants to develop recreation because of the resources in that community. Uh, so, Salado all by itself stands, nobody else likes Salado, no, I don't think that's the case. Uh, but Salado certainly has its share of, of its challenges and its flavor or its personality, or what you like.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other questions, please?
Bruce, the only concern that I have is that it looks like you have some naval experience.
Yes.
That's, that's a concern there.
Okay, well, I won't hold that against you.
Yeah.
Hello, actually, I'm quite proud of it, uh, having my career in the VA, uh, I had the opportunity to take a direct commission with, uh, a, a branch of the service, in this case, Navy. Uh, and then as, uh, I've worked through different times, as principally as a reserve officer, um, I, I assigned as a VA, a Chief Operations Officer, and then subsequently a CEO. But essentially, my billet was my assignment, uh, so it was a great merging of, of the two worlds, uh, it got me as a veteran, uh, I mean, I was in VA because I loved working with veterans, I wasn't there to make a lot of money, I didn't. Um, but, uh, the Navy is, well, the way I went, and like I say, I won't hold anything...
But I appreciate your, uh, service to our veterans.
Thank you.
Other questions, please? Well, sir...
Hey, may I ask you something?
Pardon?
I- if, if I may, um, I wonder if someone might be able to tell me the history of this activity in Salado? Uh, is it new, um, is it a, uh, a restart of something that has existed in the past? Um, can you give me just a little snapshot of where the... Sure. This is, this is a new committee that we're trying to get together, and we've not had a full committee, so it hasn't even met yet. So as soon as we can get a full committee together, we're trying to start meeting and move as fast as we can.
Frank, Frank was a part of the committee or the establishment of what they call the West Side Layover. Frank, do you wanna talk about that for a few moments?
Well, that's one of the first things that I think this committee could help with, it's, it wouldn't be the final decision-maker in this, but it could certainly give, point some direction of creating the West Side, West Side overlay, or even incorporating that part into the historic district overlay in terms of what we would like the west side of I thirty-five to look like in future development, and possibly what types of businesses and what types of grape we wanna see there.
Uh, that would make, uh, Frank, that would make a lot of sense, it's a high priority. I also would probably want to see, uh, continued integration of interests at the academic side. Um, I sat on the, uh, committee, oh, a year and a half or two years ago, that developed the school bond. But that, um, and, and that's a, you're kinda going back to someone's question earlier about what made it Salado unique or was it unique. The, the school system here certainly is, is a magical, uh, magical part of the community. I have two children that graduated from Salado School, um, I think you have some incredible staff out there. And if you think about it, uh, the development of the academic world, the retention of your young people, um, to help them start and stay in the community, uh, is all part and parcel of academic reach. And so hopefully we have a chance to speak to academics as far as plan as well.
Well, I think one of the main things we wanna do as an Economic Development Committee is to try to improve the quality of life where we can in Salado, and that certainly is a big piece of the quality of life here in Salado, is our school district.
It is. At, at times, there have been, um, a local college as well as a college in Brownwood who has hinted that they might like to have either a office here or perhaps even establishment. The one I'm talking about is Brownwood recently went to New Braunsthal and opened a campus there. Um, the other one, I do not have permission to use their names, but, uh, it is a local college, and there might be a possibility that if they can't make a campus here, that they would at least have an office here to be used. But academically, with the driving to Austin, the driving to Round Rock, even the driving to southwestern Georgetown, as well as Baylor and the other schools in Waco and in between, Salado sounds like to me a good choice.
Yeah, I, it's certainly a, a rich area. Um, I think that, uh, if you had a chance to look at what is growing in, in the Temple areas, such as the biomedical district, uh, some of the opportunities that young people have to reach out beyond the borders of the individual high school itself, uh, all those things will, will have the chance to make this community that much better, if I can borrow the term, Frank, a better place to live. Uh, so I'm excited about the opportunity and, uh, and hope to be able to bring some energy to developing that activity.
Well, with your experience and HFT and way of looking at things, sure sounds good. Don, do you have anything that you would like to say?
No, sir, this, this is your, this is your game.
Okay. Well, we wanna thank you for coming, and, uh, I'm going to, uh, entertain a motion, and, um, I don't know if you wanna sit here or you'd like to be dismissed, whichever is your choice, it's fine.
Oh, it's, uh, all right, I'd like to stay on, and, so I know whether I have to start getting my homework right away.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion, please.
I'd like to approve, Bruce, your pardon.
Which one made that? Okay, Mark, um, a motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion?
Question.
Question has been called. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, likewise? Welcome to the family.
Thank you very much, I'm glad we're...
Welcome aboard, Bruce, great to have you.
Thank you, I'll, I'll, uh, hopefully make you proud.
Thanks, Bruce, sure you will.
Okay.
Okay, Don, it's your turn.
Okay, as far as the City Administrators' report, uh, we have a number of things to go over tonight, so I'll try to move quickly, but try to be as comprehensive as I possibly can. First of all, wastewater project update, uh, connection activity is picking up, uh, for those customers not yet connected to the wastewater system, as you know, we have some plumbers that, that kind of staffed down at the beginning of the COVID situation, uh, and now they're up and busy and moving. McCains right now is in, is full construction, as far as the wastewater goes, that connected, uh, business down on Pace Park, and we've got five or six others that are in line over the next couple of weeks, so... Good news is, uh, they're, they're moving in the direction, uh, like they promised, to, to get connected. Plans are being made to raise twenty valve covers and one manhole cover for the wastewater system. Uh, we're having to do that for the contractor for the Main Street Improvement Project. Uh, the cost should not be anything really significant, uh, as far as doing that goes, but they have to raise those, because in some of those particular areas, there will be sidewalks located, and, and also maybe some asphalt. Work is underway on the renewal process with the discharge permit for the village's wastewater system. As you know, this comes up, uh, for renewal periodically, our, our renewal is coming up in January. Uh, we need to have everything in the early summer to get that process rolling, we're not anticipating any issues, uh, we've been in compliance, in good shape, um, you know, a few flips, you know, during the startup, but everything's gone well for the most part, uh, and we're not planning any changes in the permit limits or anything like that, so it hopefully will be an administrative situation. Uh, Village will be seeking bids on the Royal Street Odor Control System at the end of this month. Our engineer is, uh, finalizing, uh, his, his package, he ran into some problems finding a electrical engineer who, uh, had time available to assist, but, uh, we're targeting for the end of this month to get that bid package out on that control system. And lastly, uh, talking about the wastewater system, and in particular the wastewater debt, as you know, we, uh, we adopted the parameters order that gave us six months to go out and, uh, and see if we can get, uh, a better interest rate that's beneficial to this community and potentially to bring down our, our debt service, uh... We did not get any bids, uh, in our first attempt on this, uh, we did that, I believe, two weeks ago when we put that out. Uh, the, the feedback we were getting from banks was the fact that they were, at that, at that point, extremely busy dealing with, uh, the DCC program and, and the various SBA loan programs that were implemented as, as part of the recovery program with COVID. Uh, they indicated they did have interest in it, but at this stage of the game, they were, they were dealing with other priorities. So we're planning to go back out in another thirty to forty-five days, again, and the bid we've got, with six months to, to go back out, as many times as we need to go out, and we'll see what we come up with. We're still optimistic that we'll see, uh, some good things out of that, uh, that bid process. The Main Street Improvement Project, uh, is moving, they're, they're moving very quickly, in fact. Uh, they're pouring sidewalks and curbs, that work continues. Uh, crews are finishing work on a couple of concrete drainage structures, uh, the last few in the project that needs some work, particularly up here around the, uh, the, uh, Stagecoach and, and Main Street end. Uh, work continues on the installation of the concrete basis for the ninety-six decorative lights that will be lining Main Street. Uh, we're hopeful that they'll start putting up some of those light poles in the next three to four weeks, uh, that they're making good progress in getting that work done. Uh, sidewalk and railing for the Rock Creek Bridge is complete, if you've had a chance to look at the railing, uh, that's pretty nice. Uh, the, the sidewalk came out good, uh, they did some reworking, as we mentioned before in a previous meeting about the concrete railing on the bridge, and, and that looks good too, uh, I think we're, we're gonna see a nice structure when that is all said and done. They are working through some logistical issues with the business owner on the south side of the bridge, on the east, it's actually the southwest side of the bridge, uh, the Howling Wolf, and they're working with property owners to try to do what they can to try to ensure access, there's some ADA issues there that they're having to do, they're gonna require the construction to switch back, and I think the property owners have expressed some concern about the access of their property at that location, so, uh, we've been in a meeting with techs, dot, and the property owners to try to work through some muscle on that, hopefully we can, we can reach a happy meeting on that. Another round of roadside paving is slated for early next week, so you should expect traffic delays. Uh, what they're doing right now is they're actually doing some of the parking paving in addition to lanes and paving to allow for the continued lane of, of sidewalk and things along those lines. And if you've been on the south end of Main Street down by the museum, uh, you'll see that the contractors have started to install some grass, uh, down there, and they will be revedgeing that whole area with grass, uh, up and down the, the entire construction route, so you're gonna be seeing, uh, things really start to look, uh, pretty amazing. It's starting to, it's starting to actually take shape, we're beginning to see what it's gonna look like in reality, and it's looking pretty good. They're telling us still, their, their target date for completion is early summer, weather permitting, so we'll see how that plays out. The Salado Salamander Critical Habitat, as you know, we had a briefing, a rather lengthy briefing, uh, from Mr. Aaron in the Clearwater District, uh, last meeting, and, uh, we have had two video conference calls the Coalition has, uh, with, with representatives of the county, uh, representatives of the Brownwater District, and of course, uh, uh, and the Salado Water Spike Corporation has been in communication. Uh, the, the topic of discussion is whether we need to move forward, and can we move forward and submit our own boundaries for proposed critical habitat areas. You know, the, at, at this stage of the game, it appears the, the boundary that Fish and Wildlife will be using when they designate the critical habitat is a rather a vast area, and, and we have some concerns about just how many properties will be included into that, uh, and really whether they all really do need to be included into that, or the more the, the properties closer to the spring areas by the bridge, uh, so we, we met today, as a matter of fact, for an hour and a half, uh, and visited with a consultant, uh, who, uh, feels that we do have a standing to be able to approach Fish and Wildlife before they issue their proposed critical habitat, uh, guidelines in, in, in August, and, and, and give some input, and then offer some suggestions, um, you know, regarding the boundaries, or maybe a reduced boundary area. And so we're working in that direction, obviously the consultant is gonna charge some fees to, to bring that forward to Fish and Wildlife, that's their job, uh, we're awaiting a cost proposal to find out exactly how much this, this presentation, this early presentation would cost, and also, the, the thought process would be, you'll use it to do the early presentation, but also to deal with the presentation after the, the actual proposal is, is released in August by Fish and Wildlife, because remember, there's a twelve-month term in period, uh, and then there's some give and take that will take place in that. Uh, we hope to have that cost proposal early next week, uh, so we can decide. We've got about a sixty-day window to get before Fish and Wildlife to tell them what we think the boundaries of the habitat area should be. We, right now, are the only party that has standing at this stage of the game. Obviously, when they release the critical habitat, there will be a number of other parties that will come into the game of standing and have input at the table, but right now, we're the only one, and the reason we're the only one is because we have the science, we've done all the science, uh, for Fish and Wildlife for the designation, so, uh, we obviously have it here in, in a place at the table that others don't. The other thing we've talked about is visiting Williamson County, because as Dirk pointed out in our, in our last meeting, uh, a lot of our science, a lot of our research, a lot of our studies, uh, are basically showing that, uh, you know, there's evidence of the Salado Salamander in Williamson County, not just here in Salado. Uh, and so obviously, when this issue is critical habitat designation, uh, there's a very high likelihood that they're gonna try to incorporate some areas in Williamson County. Uh, Judge Blackburn has worked very hard since taking offense, trying to bridge the gap between Williamson County and between Bell County, uh, there was some bad blood at, at the county line for a while, uh, but he's done a phenomenal job at trying to, to get the folks to realize that, you know, we don't think they're the devil, and, and they don't think we're the devil. And so we're thinking it might make sense, with knowledge that Williamson County could fall into this critical habitat disease, to maybe get together with them and have them come to the table with us at the same time with Fish and Wildlife, uh, out of interest in, in showing that we're all together in this situation. So, uh, we'll keep you updated as we promise on that situation, but, uh, there's a lot of movement going on on that. Three repairs, well, we've got a contractor lined up to come in and do, uh, the major repairs on Salado Plaza Road, uh, we're gonna be looking at a concrete patch, that the estimated cost is gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood of about seventy-five hundred dollars for that concrete patch area, and we're gonna do asphalt patches on some of the other weak spots in that particular road. Uh, that is a road that we're gonna need to take serious... That is a road that we're going to need to take serious look at as far as budget goes for this coming year. It's a road that we can throw an awful lot of money at. And, you know, we may want to take a step back and rethink this particular road and maybe go back in and look at potential reconstruction of this road in a different format. There may be some stimulus dollars that may be difficult. We're going to have to address the issue of heavy truck traffic on that road at some time in the very near future because that's what's causing the problem. It's not Mike and Don's cars. It's the Ace Hardware delivery trucks, the Brooks Brothers delivery trucks, and those guys that are pulling off to the side of the road and making rear deliveries. So we'll work with that and potentially end up initiating some discussions with those businesses to see if they can participate and maybe help. And we don't like the fact the number's down. But, you know, March was not, it is hard as we were anticipating. March was a very confusing month for businesses and for the general public. And obviously, things got even more crazy in April, which we are expecting a significant hit in next month's sales tax check. It'll probably be the lowest, one probably the lowest sales tax check the city has seen maybe in its history. You know, but we'll just have to wait and see how that plays out. Chad's reporting a couple of developments we've got going on, which I think you guys are interested on. Sanctuary development, site development work for the single-family residential portion of the development has been put on hold. We visited with the developers this week, and they've indicated that until the economic conditions improve, they're not going to be moving forward with site development work. They feel comfortable that hopefully in the near future that will resume. But at this stage of the game, it's on hold until the economic conditions improve. That said, they've also notified us that they are in the process of working out an arrangement for a developer to come in and begin construction of the apartments and some of the multifamily areas in the commercial tract. And they're in the process of looking at a flat. They're talking about a land transaction with a developer who's going to come in and develop these pieces of the commercial project. So we're expecting some type of flat from them in the next 30 to 60 days. And we, of course, will keep you updated on that. The Drake Landing Development, that's their Rosemont development. That particular development, construction plan has been reviewed and things are in order from that standpoint. Our next step is to get the property properly zoned. We're working with our zoning code. We'll probably have to make a few minor modifications and some of the setbacks on the zoning code for our smaller lot subdivisions that we'll, you know, we'll proceed and run simultaneously at the time we go through the zoning process on it. But you're probably going to be seeing that come to your plate in early June as it goes to DMZ at the end of this month. So let's talk about the coronavirus and give you the latest as far as that situation goes. To date, as of what time we're looking at, as of 7:02, we have 196 positive cases that have been identified in Bell County. The good news is that those numbers are not jumping up as much every day as we've seen in the past. In fact, we had no jumps from yesterday. This week, we had two or three days where we did not see any type of increase in social days. So we're beginning to see the plateau that everybody had predicted we were going to see in early May. They talked about the first or second week. The Health Department is telling us that they think the plateau should occur on Monday or Tuesday next week. What does the plateau mean? I think that's the thing, that everybody has their definition. But our health district's definition of the plateau is a period where, not necessarily we don't see any increases, you know, that everything starts to go down, but a period where those increases we do see are minor. There are minor adjustments you'll see us, you know, but that they're not expecting any type of surges. They're not expecting any type of spikes. And it appears that we're past that point of spikes, at least with this initial wave. That said, they're very cautious in pointing out the fact that with the governor's reopening of businesses, that there's a high likelihood that we will see spikes in the cases. There's a high potential of that. We should not expect to see any of those spikes related to the reopening any earlier than the end of next week, just the way things time out. So they're going to be watching those numbers very closely. They're hopeful they won't see a spike. What is the definition of a spike? Just so you know, the definition of a spike is a 20 cases, a jump of 20 cases in the 24-hour period. So if we see 20 or more cases in the 24-hour period, that's what we're going to be looking at. Pace Park and Serena Park, we have reopened those full now. We have COVID-19 signage. Facilities are being monitored and are subject to closure. Is any unhealthy conditions exist? I will tell you, Serena Park in particular has been significantly used since it was reopened. And Pace Park, we've seen a pretty good jump in activity and traffic with that. So we're monitoring those parks very closely. Just so you know, the playground is closed and will be closed for several more weeks. And that's not uncommon in other communities, too, because we're trying to limit the crowds and those type of things in that area. And also, our restaurants are closed as a result of that, too. But the lower area of the park and the pavilion area is open for people to go and then wander around and hang in and those type of things. We are not doing any reservations, no group reservations through the month of June at this stage of the game. Again, all of this to try to minimize close contact groups and to try to keep the size of groups down, as the governor's continuing to urge us to do that. A handful of businesses have reopened in Salado since the governor launched the effort to reopen Texas back on May the 1st. As you know, this week, he announced some more businesses that can open this weekend and also on the 18th. We're expecting more businesses in this area to begin to open up in the coming weeks. I think there's obviously some concern among some of the business owners that this may be too soon. They don't know what type of capacities are going to be beneficial to them at this stage of the game. Obviously, you're at a 25% capacity here for that. And I think a lot of businesses are going to wait until that capacity number, the allowable capacity increases. I think, though, that it's very likely that after the 18th of May, between the 18th and the end of the month, you're going to see more local businesses open up slowly, but surely. So we're kind of anxious for that. We're working with the Chamber of Commerce right now to communicate with those businesses about the protocol for reopening. We're helping folks determine their capacities. We're helping folks with the protocol that they're supposed to follow when they reopen. It's not just a matter of opening your doors. The governor has a long list of recommended items you need to follow, that you need to do if you're going to be reopening your business to encourage and to promote safety. Obviously, wearing masks is critical. Again, looking at the capacity piece, making sure you've got social distancing. As I mentioned, he announced earlier this week that salons and barber shops and nail studios may reopen tomorrow. A gym's office buildings may reopen on the 18th. No startup date yet for the bars. A graduation protocol has been established by TEA for high school graduations. We've been in communication with the school district, and they are in the process of trying to finalize plans for a graduation ceremony. So there will be a Salado High School graduation ceremony. Whether that will be an outdoor ceremony is unknown at this stage of the game. I think that's something they're looking at. But the last word I had from Dr. Flott earlier today was that they were waiting to get some of the details finalized. Along those lines, we have been contacted by a parents group from the high school about the idea of potentially holding a parade for students. And that particular item is something that we have indicated we have an open willingness to work with them. What we're talking about potentially is something on Williams Road where people can park on the roadside and the seniors would parade down to Williams Road. But the details of that, again, are still being developed. And if that ends up being the final decision, we certainly will let you know when and the date and what's involved. We've offered full support to them to try to help make that a reality, to try to help make that a special event for the seniors. No response yet from the governor to the village's request to hold its general election in conjunction with the July 14th runoff election. I would just assume at this stage of the game that the governor is dealing with some other priority issues. But again, we and a number of other cities are still waiting for some type of final word from the governor on that particular issue. COVID-19 is obviously impacting the sales tax and room revenues. We talked about that as far as sales tax go. I will tell you, room tax revenues, we're beginning to see a decline in those. Obviously, our room tax revenues for the month of April will be probably close to zero from a standpoint of what we're anticipating. Planning is underway for the potential next wave of the virus. I think that's the thing that people need to understand, and that is this is going to be an ongoing process. This is going to be kind of new normal for a while. And we are beginning the process of planning for a fall wave and then maybe a wave beyond that. What's involved in that planning process at a staff level? We're obviously shoring up our stockpile of our PPE for village staff. We received a donation, a great donation this week, of a load of face masks for our folks and also some more hand sanitizer. We have some protective clothing, too, but we're looking to ramp up and trying to secure more supplies for that for the coming year because we think it's something we're going to be dealing with off and on for many months to come. We're also in the process of reviewing our internal health protocol standards. And we're looking at hardening our facilities to try to protect the staff and also to try to protect the public if they interface with the staff. I think it's something people need to understand, and that is the village's municipal building has been open every weekday, every workday, should I say, since this particular situation broke out. We were lucky enough to have facilities in place that allowed our staff to be at a distance from our customers as they come in. But we felt it important to keep the building open, provide contact if at all possible for those that wanted. Obviously, we were available by phone, too, and email. But our doors have stayed open, and we have no plans to close that. We've been able to function rather well from that perspective. We've not had any really adverse impacts on that. And believe it or not, throughout this period, we've had quite a bit of walk-in traffic from folks. So we continue to plan to do that. And at this stage of the game, there are no plans for interruption of service. Lastly, as far as the COVID situation goes, I want to offer some clarification because there's some word out on the street right now that since we've had to move our election to November, then that means any action the board takes between now and November will be invalid because we have three members of the board. These terms were due to expire in May. And if we're not electing replacements for those until November, that means any action that gets taken by the board from here on out and until November is invalid. That is absolutely not the case. And I think it's important to understand that is absolutely not the case. The board's actions will be valid from here until November. The mayor and aldermen, as you know, are elected to the years, are elected to terms of two years. And that's under section 2235 of the Texas Constitution. It's one of those situations that, you know, that they're elected for two-year terms. The other thing to keep in mind is the fact that the same constitution, Article 16 under General Division, Section 17, has a provision there that very clearly states that officers who are in office and if their terms technically expire or if they resign, they are still technically in their capacity and in their position until such time as the successor is duly chosen and seated. So translation, those three members of the board whose terms were set to expire in May, their terms may very well have expired in May. But the reality of it is till the voters elect replacement, they are technically still in office. It's kind of a strange provision because there's no limitation on how long they can stay in office until a successor is appointed. But constitutionally, they are still legal voting members of the board. I think it's also important to understand that when the governor extended or allowed for the extension of elections to November, it was made very clear that those terms would carry on for another six months or on to November from May. So in effect, the people who get elected in November will have an 18-month term as opposed to a 24-month term. So I just wanted to make sure that was out there on the street, that they're saying that, you know, since their terms have technically expired, that the votes are illegal and they're not authorized, not valid. That is just absolutely not the case. You're still a functioning board of aldermen with six members. And obviously, when November rolls around, if that's the election date, whoever gets elected comes in and the board functions from then on out, just like they will function up until that date. So I just wanted to point that out. So Mayor, that's all I've got on my report. I'm sorry it's a little long, but I felt like you needed some of that information.
Questions to Don, please.
Hey, Don?
Yeah?
On the Main Street completion date, did I hear you say that it's coming up pretty close?
Yeah, they're talking about, they're saying, they're telling us it's going to be early summer. And I believe that means sometime in June.
Sometime in June?
I guess, like weather permitting, they're making, they're making pretty significant progress to the point that it's starting to rebedge areas and things on those lines. So, yeah, I think, I think early summer of June is, June is the target month.
Have we started any kind of plans to have a ribbon cutting or a ceremony on that?
Yes, sir. There are a couple of folks who are in the process of, and they've actually, they actually started working. Chatley got that process started before, working with the Chamber. Susan Terry keeps Salado beautiful. And I think the plan is to have a community celebration down there, probably in August, where we would block it off. We'd have entertainment in the streets, literally have a community block party at the market. One of the things that we thought about is the idea of inviting the governor down to see if we could get him to come down. Of course, this COVID thing has thrown a lot of stuff into kind of a state of limbo, but we're still planning just in case.
Okay. And that leads me to my second question, is that we have contracted with a vendor to provide a laser show. Is that correct?
Yeah, we have. And as you know, that laser show was to be held, I believe, in April was the date. And obviously, we went into a lockdown mode in April. So, and the Arts Commission recognized that across the state with all of their activities. And they have now told us that we need to try to look at spending that money in August sometime. One of the things that we talked about was potentially looking at doing that in conjunction with the kickoff, the ribbon cutting of Main Street, or potentially rolling that display into stroll if they would let us carry the money over into November. But right now, the guidance we're getting from them is they say your target date should be no later than August.
Okay, that sort of piggybacks on what I was thinking about is that if we're going to have a senior parade, would that be appropriate use of funds to have the senior parade that way with the laser show at it?
Yeah, it could. You know, I guess it could. I would think at this stage of the game, it may be a little early to be having the community gatherings of that size, potentially of that size, just based on the guidance we're getting from the governor's office. The thought is that by August, the group restrictions will still be there, but they're going to be lessened and not as restrictive. We're still under kind of some tight guidelines as far as how many people we can get in one place.
Or the, or maybe even a Fourth of July, instead of fireworks, we could have a laser show.
Could do something like that, certainly.
Okay. Next item was, what's our flagpole status with our Eagle Scout?
You know, he was planning to do that with Memorial Day. And he called and said that he wondered if that was something we felt would be impacted by some of the restrictions. And our comment at the time was yes, that probably, not knowing what was going to be happening from a May standpoint, that we needed to find maybe a better date. So he was looking at, maybe looking at doing something on July 4th, in or around July 4th to do it in conjunction with Independence Day. But again, they're still kind of in that, in that mode. And for those of you who promised to give them money, by the way, if you've not had a chance to do that and you need me to send you the information, let me know and I can get you his name and information so you can go and get the checks to him.
Okay. And I know that we've been talking about putting some stepping stones across the Salado Creek. How is that going to be, want to impact our critical habitat kind of process?
Well, I think it, I think it could. I think that timing is going to be everything. Because they release in August, and then you've got a one-year, a 12-month comment period. And after that, plans get approved. There's no question that there are public improvement limitations that will be in place as part of, whether it be the Rule D or whether it be, you know, whatever. There are going to be public improvement limitations. there're gonna be public improvement limitations. A lot of them are gonna relate to water quality, uh, and those types of things. Uh, I think the placement of those walking stones is gonna be a, an issue that we're gonna need to watch and be careful with. You know, one of the things that has come out in other communities where they've implemented these habitat requirements is they've actually put some limitations on water use in that particular area, so it could have an adverse impact on that. Uh, I think we're still proceeding with the idea, uh, until we get told no. Uh, I think we need to, but I mean, uh, we, we still have discussions with our engineers and, and looking at moving forward, but I, I think there's a, there's a likelihood that, that that project could get impacted.
So I have a question about that, um, are they going through a permitting process for the stones, the stepping stones? Cause there's a, you have to, you know, get state and federal approval to do that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, so our agreement on the stepping stones is, is that it might be, uh, paid for and installed by, uh, some of the local businesses down there? And, uh, in, in exchange, we would lead the charge in, uh, doing the, uh, permitting and, uh, plans and whatever else we can do to support that?
Right.
And, and the last, if that's the questions, finished with questions on the stepping stone, my last comment is, have we issued any citations on the COVID social distancing thing within the village? I know there's been several, there's ser- been several instances where our, our police force has been very energetic about, uh, about social distancing and, and, uh, I just wonder, have we had any citations issued?
No, and, no, and it, it really, in all honesty, countywide, we've not issued any citations. I think the, the word we heard countywide today was that they've had two hundred and thirty or two hundred and forty complaints about, uh, violations, uh, you know, in, in the last few weeks, but no citations have been issued. Our guys are, we're, we're trying to be, you know, you know, we're, we're trying to react and to try to help break up some of the crowds, you know, when possible, uh, you know, but we try to be proactive and we try to be positive, uh, with folks and, and, and try to encourage them and, and warn them, but we've not issued any, any citations and I, to be honest with you, I, I don't see that hap- I, I think most people have been extremely good when they're told, hey, you need to break it up, and, and they've, they've done that and, and, and been very effective in that, uh, so we're, we're very happy with the way they've reacted.
Okay, that's all my questions I had, thank you.
We've not arrested any, any, we've not arrested any, uh, salon operators.
That's a good thing.
Hey, hey, Don, this is Cole.
Were there any other questions or comments for Don?
I got one, Don, this is Cole.
Hey, John.
Yeah, I, I got it with the sanctuary, uh, sanctuary development on hold for economic reasons. Does that also fall suit with this, with the, uh, Smith branch and rural street development?
No, he's, he's, he's planning to move forward. He actually has a contract lined up to do the wastewater extension and, uh, all, all systems forward with him at this point.
The end of this month, you say?
No, it's all systems moving forward at this point. As I mentioned in, in the report, as I mentioned in the report, we, we're in the process of getting this property zoned and making some slight modifications of the zoning on us in conjunction.
Yeah, it gets scratchy. Thank you, that's all I got.
Sure.
Hey, Don, I had one question, um...
Yeah?
Maybe two, um, Susan Terry presented to us a project for them to replace the railing across Thomas Sonal Bridge. Where is that project?
Uh, that project has been, I believe it's supposed to be let by Tech dot either next month or the month after, Rodney. The, the designs were approved, the S came through, I think I mentioned that a couple of meetings back, the, the, they were, they were able to get the S that they originally told us they couldn't do, uh, they were able to get the S in, in the railing, and it looks, looks pretty nice, I think a certain example of it, um, and, uh, it's, it's moving forward. They're, they're still planning to, uh, to let it.
Okay, that's all.
It's gonna look nice, but you know, the interesting thing is I, I, I was, I was up in Waco earlier this week and I looked at some of that. I think ours is gonna look better than, than what we see up there.
Other questions or comments? So, Don? Don, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Salado Plaza Road, the seventy-five hundred dollars, how many patches are they doing for that? Is this one or how many?
That is, that is the one concrete patch. It's a long concrete stretch, uh, that they're gonna put in. There are several other failures that we're gonna go in and do asphalt patches to, to hold over until we're able to make a decision on how we wanna proceed with the rest of it, with, with the future of that roadway as far as how to address it.
Okay. Uh, two, it's volatile, two, it's monitoring the creek. Is there an organization or volunteers or, who is doing that, monitoring?
Uh, monitoring the, the crowds on the creek?
Well, you said the creek was being monitored.
Oh, yeah, we're monitoring with, with police department, with city staff. We're all just kinda keeping an eye on it just to make sure the crowds don't get too big, to the point where we've got a, a distancing issue and a safety issue.
Don, has any decisions been made about the rather large piece of land across the street from the new school and across from Wilkes General Home?
No, sir.
Those are all the questions that I have. All right, we're gonna, if there are not any more questions or comments, let us go forth with number four, the ordinance. Consider approval of an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the Village of Salado, Texas prohibiting the parking of certain vehicles or trailer on public streets, alleys, parkways, boulevards, and on private property zoned or used as residential within the corporate limits of the Village of Salado. Repealing any ordinance conflict with providing for the publication and providing an effective date. This one is mine, and it has caused a lot of controversy. I wanna make myself perfectly clear about four things. One, we have discussed this in the past, in fact, a couple of months ago, we sort of discussed what we are going to do, but as long as there is construction, there is no way to block trucks carrying cement, uh, construction materials, or anything else from going to their site, nor do we want to do that. However, five phone calls, one, a new one coming today, have come to my telephone stating that the big trucks, eighteen-wheelers, that are driven by citizens of the community or of the ETJ, that they're being parked either in front of their houses or in the driveway, and that it is not the way that they feel it should be done. We have narrow streets here, very narrow streets. Go down Chisholm Trail, and you've got to be very careful of the person coming forward. You go down any, any street and you see mailboxes, brick ones, that have been hit. And fortunately, we have people, young couples with children, moms and dads, elderly citizens with young hearts, walking down those roads. Can't stop the construction companies, but parking someone in the, parking a large truck in front of someone's house is dangerous and it will cause a casualty. Next. Property values are controlled, maybe not totally, by roads and by the way roads are repaired and the way roads are taken care of. Frankly, fifty thousand dollars does not repair a part of a road, not even beginning. We operate on a one-point-two-million-dollar budget and pay all of our bills from there. How in the world is the future of Salado going to pay for road repairs? You just heard a few minutes ago that one patch is seventy-five hundred dollars. And our reserve money, we have a little less than a million dollars, and we're concerned about that because we know what sales tax is gonna be, probably ju- or for the month of April. If we have a bake sale, we might get two thousand dollars if we're lucky. I'm telling you folks that the reality of what we are doing is very clear. It's not safe, it is going to hurt the environment, and it is going to destroy our roads. And that is the reason, and those were the reasons that were presented to me by the people who have called. Not talking about pickup trucks or those kind of trucks, we're talking about trucks that have eighteen wheels and a cab parking in front of their houses because they don't wanna park anywhere else. That's the background for the ordinance. Questions?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is Cole. I fully support this ordinance because I'm certain to notice the same type of vehicles being parked right outside Salado on ETJ as you come in the backside, so I fully support this, thank you.
Other questions?
I just have a question for clarification. So if I remember correctly, when we were talking about this initially, it was just for vehicles parking on the road, but has this ordinance also included them, um, not being able to park in their driveway, the same vehicles?
Depends on how big that truck is, Amber. I mean, if you talk about an eighteen-wheeler, I don't know very many driveways that can hold an eighteen-wheeler, or I don't know very many yards unless you live out in the country where an eighteen-wheeler can support, where an owner can support an eighteen-wheeler.
Amber, let me, let me jump in and, and say that, um, the answer to that question is this ordinance as it's written right now prohibits the large vehicles and commercial trailers and commercial vehicles from parking on the streets unless they're at a particular piece of property doing business and are properly parked. Uh, but there also was expressed interest by at least one member of the board to include language in there that related to the parking of vehicles in residential areas on private property, on property that was zoned residential. So yes, in response to your question, the way it's written right now is it addresses parking on the public street, and then it also addresses parking certain vehicles on residentially zoned property, be it in the driveway, be it in the yard, be it wherever.
That is correct. Any other questions, please?
Don, to be clear, as I'm reading this ordinance that, that's been put before us, we're not including boats, we're not including RVs, we're not including any of the kind of AT vehicles or those type of things, it's just simply the large commercial vehicles that we're addressing. Right. It, it addresses commercial utilities, it prohibits commercial utility trailers, commercial motor vehicles, buses, which we included in there, you can strike it, but we felt the need to include that because downtown, we do have issues occasionally with buses. Uh, it, it deals with, uh, road trailers, semi-trailers, um, does not address, exactly as you said, it does not address RVs, it does not address boats.
Hey, Don?
Yeah?
As I was, uh, driving the village today, I saw that, uh, there was a food truck parked in the driveway of somebody's, uh, house. Would that, uh, food trailer, and it was quite, it was like, you know, a twenty footer, would that be impacted by this ordinance?
It would, cause that would be considered to be a commercial, it would be considered to be a commercial vehicle, a commercial trailer. Uh, so yes.
So how, how many of these instances are, are we talking about? We're gonna be going, if this is passed, how many, uh, people are we gonna be going out and giving citations to at this time?
You know, I, I will tell you that I, I, we've received, uh, a number of phone calls about the eighteen-wheeler, uh, in the one neighborhood, and, uh, you know, that, that's kind of the, the calls we've gotten at this stage of the game. My guess would be if we adopt this ordinance and we begin the enforcement process on this ordinance, uh, there are several, I, I know we've got several residents who have, uh, contracting businesses, uh, that, that would park their vehicles in, in their driveways or on the streets in front of their houses that we would have to address. Uh, how many people, I would, and, and, you know, I guess, you know, you may be looking at ten. Again, that's just a, that's a total swag, but I would guess somewhere in the neighborhood about ten, maybe twelve.
And, and we've had just one complaint and we're gonna penalize ten people?
The complaint I've gotten was about the eighteen-wheelers. I've not gotten any complaints about the commercial vehicles, uh, as far as trailers go and things like that.
Correct.
Yeah, the biggest complaint I've gotten about the trailers is the lawn companies, when they park, choke off the, the driveway or choke off the, uh, the street width.
Right, have we, uh, in the, in the instance that we're talking about with the eighteen-wheeler, uh, is it, um, against the HOA or the deed and restrictions of the house that it is, uh, parked in front of or in, or beside?
Ooh, you know, I, I don't know the answer to that question, Mike, cause, you know, we don't enforce deed restrictions, but we, we certainly told the complainant that they should look at it. My understanding is that there might be a provision that relates to that in their deed restrictions, but the complainant, uh, on the trailer told us that they didn't have anybody in their neighborhood that would enforce that or could enforce that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Uh, good questions, please?
All right, Don, so the lawn companies, when they're doing yards and stuff like that, I mean, how's that gonna work?
It doesn't, it doesn't affect them at all. If, if, if the trailer is there and they're performing a commercial service in that particular piece of property, whether it be a lawn company, whether it be painting, uh, whether it be, uh, you know, a, a birthday party with a food trailer, it would not impact them at all. What, what it would impact is gonna be the, the painting contractor who parks his painting trailer in his driveway at night, or the, the food trailer that's, that's, that's sort of the food vehicle that's, that's, that's parked, uh, or the, you know, it, it, it should not impact, you know, if, if, if it's your vehicle, for example, if, if you're a plumber and, and, you know, that's your vehicle and you park it there and you come and go from your house at night, that's one thing, but trailers, um, it, it's not intended to penalize the individuals who that's their, that's their only means of transportation. It's mainly intended to deal with, you know, the, the commercial vehicles that, you know, li- like trailers and, and large commercial vehicles, Maco, Maco tool, tool trucks, those type of things that you see sometimes, not in this community, but in other communities, uh, parked in neighborhoods.
Yeah, okay.
Frankly, if you're, if you're a UFA, yeah, if you're a UFA, if you're a UFA, uh, adjuster and the UFA's giving you a vehicle and that's your, that's your, that's your company vehicle that you drive to and from work with, and, 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 and that's your vehicle, it's not gonna penalize those people.
But, Don, on page five of this ordinance in section two, paragraph A, says, "General prohibition, it shall be unlawful for any person to stop, stand, or park a," and it goes in and says, "commercial utility trailer upon any public street within the pub, within the, uh, village limits." That's what it says, and so if you're out there enforcing it, every, uh, lawn maintenance guy that comes through here and parks his vehicle is in violation of this ordinance.
Now, if you, if you, if you look, if you look further as far as the, uh... Now, if you, if you, if you look, if you look further as far as the, uh, the situation, there's language in there that actually says that as long as they're providing a service of that property, it's allowed.
Where does it say that?
Uh, for commercial vehicle, motor vehicles, uh, where it is lawful to park a commercial vehicle, utility trailer for the purpose of accepting, delivering, it's an affirmative defense of prosecution, uh, mechanical effects make them safe. Let me see the language specifically. Uh, "This, this shall not apply to street construction, maintenance, repair equipments, trucks, equipment rentals, vehicles used by public service utility companies engaged in extending public service, commercial motor vehicles or commercial utility trailers parked in or adjacent to a location where commercial business services are being performed only for the period necessary to complete the work." It's further down that paragraph.
That's paragraph B and about halfway down on page six.
No, it's actually on page five in paragraph A, the one you read. It's about halfway down in that paragraph. Says, "This section shall not apply to," and then it says, "commercial motor vehicles or commercial utility trailers parked in or adjacent to a location where commercial business services are being performed only for the period necessary to complete the work." And that, that also includes, you know, that, that, that language is in B too, I believe.
Okay. So when we, if we enact this, what we're talking about is one eighteen whee- tractor trailer, uh, vehicle, and then about another nine or ten, uh, type of commercial, uh, trailers that's going to be parked in people's yards or side yards. You know what this reminds me of, don't you? This reminds me of the RV, uh, ordinance that we issued two years ago and we had such an outcry and, uh, such an issue with it that about a, about a month or two later, we took it back and just made it go away.
Hey, Don, I'm looking for clarification on a definition.
Um.
Under definitions, uh, uh, letter A for the bus, how did we arrive at ten passengers and not twenty passengers?
Well, what we looked at in that situation was that we see periodically church buses and things like that, uh, you know, that, 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 you know, would be particularly, uh, we see more of those than we see full-blown buses. So we felt like we'd bring the number down a little bit, uh, to, to address those. Those are more the type of buses we see than, than a twenty or thirty passenger bus.
I guess, I guess what my concern is, is somebody who does own, is a family, owns maybe a fifteen passenger van, or they own a, um, Mercedes Sprinter or one of those, um, high-end vehicles, that would, this would fall into that, right?
Uh. Yeah, I, I, you know, could, yes, I, I think, depending, depending on how it's out. Yeah.
Are there any church vans out there that have more than fifteen people that are currently in our, uh, jurisdiction?
Yeah, but you probably, I believe the Baptist church may have a bus. Uh, don't know their capacity of that bus. Mike, uh, I don't think the Methodist church has one that I'm aware of. Uh, probably the Baptist church is the first one I'd be.
Those don't sit, those don't sit in residential areas, do they?
No. But section A deals with the streets. Section B deals with the residential area.
If it's parked in their private parking lot, it's not going to count.
Right. No, no, that's perfectly legitimate. It's not intended to prohibit the parking of those vehicles on commercial properties or non-residential properties. It doesn't do that.
Other questions or comments, please? I'll entertain a motion then.
Motion to approve.
Motion has been made to approve. Is there a second?
Okay.
Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion?
Question.
Question has been called. All in favor, say aye.
Mayor, could we do a roll?
Sure.
Could we, could we do a roll call on that vote so Karen can get the, the voices down?
Sure. I'll just begin by looking at the picture up here on my screen. Mike?
Aye.
Frank?
Yay.
Rodney?
Yay.
Don?
Absolutely yes.
John?
Absolutely yes.
Amber?
No.
Correct me if I am wrong. The vote is three to two for the ordinance. Don, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Then are you going to write that ordinance and bring it before us?
It's seven forty-five.
Mayor, that's what, that's what you just approved.
I know what I just approved, but we need to write it and get it in writing. I know we just approved it. Are you going to be?
It was in your packet, it was in, Mayor, it was in your package. That's, that's what you just adopted.
Okay. Okay. Moving on. Number B. Discuss and consider possible action regarding a proposed support program or business in Salado impacted by virus nineteen, COVID nineteen. Don?
Okay, uh, we, we talked about this in, in kind of a workshop environment, the last meeting, uh, and so what we've done is we've put together a proposal, we forwarded the, the framework for that, uh, to you this afternoon to, to take a look at. Uh, obviously, uh, you know, we're, we're of limited resources. There are some cities that are, that are going through the process of actually issuing, uh, significance to allocations of funding, uh, to, to help their local businesses. Uh, we've kind of taken a little bit of a different approach, uh, as far as looking at a comprehensive, uh, plan, uh, to, to support our business community. Uh, it's a multifaceted plan, and I think probably the, the, uh, highlight of this particular plan is the development of a small business resource center, uh, which is something, to be honest with you, that we, we thought about and we talked about in previous budgets, uh, discussions, uh, over the last couple of years. Uh, we have a lot of small businesses and a lot of businesses that, uh, you know, have started by folks who, uh, were not in business before. They're hobbyists, if you will, and they've got a, they've got a, uh, a real interest in, in having their own business and, and they've launched that process and maybe have not gone through all of the, the, the steps they really probably should go through and starts business planning and looking at things along those lines. Uh, they've been very successful, which is great, uh, but, but they're maybe getting that point where they need to get to that next step. Uh, and, and so we, we've talked over the years about the idea of maybe, um, developing a reasonable center that could be available to businesses in town, uh, where they could come by and, and ask for help and, and, and then get some counseling, uh, get help in developing business plans, looking at their marketing strategies and those type of things. Well, as we began the development of this, uh, this, this support program in response to COVID and try to help our local business community get back on their feet and move for the future, uh, we thought, you know, let's, let's continue to explore this idea and maybe we include that in the program. Uh, we've checked a number of resources out there and, and we, we've come to the conclusion that we think probably the best resource, uh, that we could potentially partner with in this particular area is, uh, the McLennan Small Business Development Center. Uh, it's a, it's an SBA, uh, program that, that works in conjunction with McLennan College. Uh, they have, uh, long tentacles, uh, that, that reach down into Bell County in addition to a number of surrounding counties, uh, not just McLennan County. Uh, they have, uh, some resource people in Temple, business councils in Temple. Uh, the timing of this call to the, uh, to the, uh, SB DC was good because, uh, with the CARES funding package that came through, they just allocated funding to actually hire an additional, uh, business counselor to help the gentleman who's, who's assigned to our particular area of the region, uh, who's, who's opting out of Temple. Uh, and we had a real good discussion in our research and talking with these folks and we think they would be a, probably a real good, uh, resource for our local business community. Uh, other communities have business resource centers that, that we talked to about the idea of partnership, but we felt that probably, uh, uh, the McLennan project is, is, is probably the best fit for we, for what we have to deal with here in Salado right now compared to what some of our neighboring communities have developed. Uh, so what we would do is, uh, we would set up this, this resource center. This is something that's typically done by chambers accomplished and our chamber is not yet there. Uh, it's getting there quickly, I think, and, and we've had discussions with this leadership about this idea of this resource center and they're very excited about the idea. Uh, one of the things that we, we'd like to do in presenting this is, is let the city see the development of this resource center and then transition this program to the chamber where it can be, you know, run by the chamber and it can be located in the chamber. Initially, what we're proposing is we're proposing to develop this center and that we would allocate office space which we have here available at City Hall, uh, where the business counselor could come in once a week. Uh, businesses would be made aware of, of the accessibility of this individual and appointments would be scheduled and they can come in and, and, and go through counseling, uh, with this particular business counselor and then let them try to help them in anything they may need as far as their businesses go, getting up and going, but also planning for the future. Uh, specifically what, uh, what we see the sources, uh, the, this, this resource center providing is providing assistance with the preparation of a strategic business plan, uh, for businesses, uh, assisting with the creation of cash flow and financial projections to help establish, uh, uh, improve finance books and records, uh, help guide potential business owners to understand the legal steps to start a business. We're talking about existing businesses, but this is also a center that would be available to somebody who would want to start a new business. Uh, this particular organization has access to, to really what other businesses exist in this area so they can give folks an idea of what type of competition exists and what they may be up against as they, as they move forward. I see the center helping businesses understand the need for accurate bookkeeping, uh, providing credit counseling, uh, for some who may need to repair bad credit, providing general business consultation, help owners improve and grow their businesses. Uh, they would, uh, assist with the development of marketing plans. Uh, they have resources that they can call in to help folks, for example, on social media, uh, advertising and those types of things for businesses. Uh, the great thing about this particular project is there's no cost for the service. There's no cost to the village and there's no cost to the business owner for this. Uh, it's funded and it's an outreach program, uh, that, that has pretty good track record in a lot of areas of the state, not just the state, but frankly across the country. Uh, it's been around for a while, it's, it's been up and it's been down as far as its, its success, uh, but, uh, right now we, we have good, good feel for them and, and we have, uh, good reviews as far as the work they're doing. Uh, we envision setting the center up, uh, and transitioning this to the chamber probably October one. Uh, and, and we visited with Laura Tracy, the president of the chamber, uh, they have some office space over there that they can move the individual to. At this stage of the game, they're kind of in a, in a state of flux, uh, but they're excited and, and, and are very open to the idea of, of, of putting this under their umbrella. Uh, again, a function that typically is done by chambers, I think it's a good idea for us to get it up and started at this point and then transition it to them, uh, so it's not, uh, it's really where it needs to be long-term. Uh, I think it's a, it's, it's a key, it's really one of the benchmark items in this plan that we're presenting tonight. The other, the other, uh, facet to this, this support program that we're proposing is, uh, something we talked about at the workshop, uh, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, and that was the idea of creating the sales tax refund program, uh, for our businesses. Uh, the idea would be to look at maybe, uh, refunding the city's share of the sales tax to our businesses, uh, that paid in, uh, in the period of March one to April thirty. Uh, as you know, the governor's order for reopen was on May one. Uh, and so the thought process, uh, behind this, this idea is that, uh, you know, businesses began to see an impact in March, not a great impact, uh, as we talked a little bit earlier, uh, but clearly April will be a, a, an extremely bad month for everybody. Uh, so the thought process would be that we would go in and, and we've already, you know, had requested the data from the state, had to get the detailed reports, and we would develop, uh, a refund program, uh, to, to refund for our businesses, uh, the city's sales tax portion that they paid in, uh, in the month of March and, and in the month of April, is, is, is this way to put it. We estimate the payout would be somewhere in the neighborhood of about fifty thousand dollars over those two months, not per month, but over those two months. Uh, that money obviously can go, you, can be used to go back into health cover utility bills, uh, if they got renters to use, if, if they need to use it for marketing, those type of things. The idea is that this money would be allocated back to these businesses to see their reopening, to see their, their, uh, you know, their existence and, and to make sure that they stay in business, uh, and, and to make sure that, uh, you know, we give them a little bit of a message forward. Uh, the other two facets to this program that we propose are, are pretty straightforward. Uh, first of all, we're proposing that, uh, we waive any city late fees for hotel motel occupancy taxes. The state is not, uh, buried on those deadlines, uh, but we think that, uh, for some of our hoteliers, uh, they may need some assistance in this time, uh, just, uh, based on some of the discussions we've had with them, uh, and also that we waive the late fees for wastewater bills. Uh, the time period, uh, you know, for, for these would be, I, I would envision we'd probably look at the, maybe going as far out as, as June, uh, if not July, as far as the waivers of those late fees. Now, mind you, we're not saying we're changing the due dates, the due dates will still be the same for wastewater, will still be the same for hotel occupancy tax, there's still an obligation that they pay those, but if they're unable to pay those in a timely fashion, uh, then we would work with them as far as, uh, you know, waiving the fees as long as we got the, the base payments over a period of time. We'd work with each one of those who would, who would request that particular assistance to make sure that we have a timely payment of the bill over, but it's just not going to be immediate, it may be over a period of months or something along those lines. And then also we're proposing that we waive the building permit fees for any commercial building improvements for the same period, uh, for any commercial, uh, folks who are wanting to do improvements on their property during this time or if they come out of this COVID nightmare. Uh, so we think it's a, it's a program that, that, uh, offers a number of options and really shows some support for the local business community as best as we can at this stage of the game. Again, I think the, the, the big piece of it being the resource center, but I think the fee waivers make them a helpful for a few, not all, but a few, uh, and, and the sales tax refund, I think will be beneficial to all. That's the program, there.
Okay. Questions to Don, please?
Yeah, Don, this is Cole, I got a question for you. I'm all about the taxes, I think that's a great thing and some of the, the give backs that, that shows some good faith, but this other part with this, uh, um, little organization that's going to help people, you know, do things better, is this something that business owners are asking for or, or is this something that just popped up and we're going to give it to them?
Now, we, we've had discussions with a number of the, the chamber has had, has, has had discussions with some of their membership too, and, and there seems to be a need, there, there's some vacancies, there's some voids, if you will, uh, you know, in, in, in information some of these business owners need and have expressed interest in. And so we think this is an opportunity to, to help fill that void. I mean, it'll, it'll, it'll have to prove itself, we'll see how successful it is. I think the key element in this is confidentiality and I think that's the thing that people have to understand. This is not something where, where, you know, I'm going to come in and Amber's going to be my counselor and we're going to sit down in the chambers and everybody's going to be walking in and out while I'm sitting there talking about how my bottom line is not right. You know, it, it's going to be a situation where, where there are actually confidentiality agreements that will be signed, uh, and, and, and that there will be an assurance that, that discussions do not go outside the walls, uh, you know, from, from that perspective. But I think, I think, John, we might find that, that, uh, it may take a little bit of time for it to, to take on and to catch on, but I think at this stage of the game, I think folks are in need and their need is support and, and we think this is a, this is one tool to provide.
Okay, yeah, good, yeah, because I, I, sometimes I worry about getting too much in people's businesses, but if they want it, then that's a good thing.
We're not going to force it on them. It has to be them volunteering. We're going to make them aware of the fact that the service will be available and we'll do that. Uh, the other thing that this organization can do is they can actually hold group business meetings too and make presentations and bringing experts, uh, in marketing, bringing, bringing experts in merchandising and those type of things to, to give some general presentations too.
Okay, so one last thing, could, could our, I can have the development council kind of be joined at the hip with these guys and we all could maybe learn something good?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I think they can, I, I think the, the, there's, there's a number of opportunities to forge relationships. I, I know Rodney and I were talking about this the other day and, and he came up with a great idea about potentially forging a relationship in the, in this project with maybe one of our local banks to, to kind of be a, an SBA access point, uh, through this organization. That's one of the things that this organization- That's one of the things that this organization does and their specialty is they focus on finding people loans and those type of things and and getting people in 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 line for loans for for business support. So, yes, I I think the EDC committee could be, I think there could be others too.
Cool. Thank you. That's all I got.
I do, so I'm I'm the same as far as, you know, the tax rebate, I think it's a great idea. I think the utility thing bothers me a little bit more. It's a slippery slope. So first of all, we owe it to our taxpayers who are paying for the sewer system to to get that paid back as as quickly as possible. So what happens when the homeowner says, or the business owner says, you know, they're 90 days behind, they couldn't pay their first bill, they couldn't pay the second one, they couldn't pay the third one, now we've we've waived their 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 late fees, but they're still three months behind, then are we still going to cut them off? Or you know what I'm saying? Because if you can't pay it the first month and then the second month's a little harder, by the time the further along they get that they're late or not able to pay those bills, it it's concerning that we're kind, you know, we're enabling that.
You know, I I think the key is going to be the parameters, how far out would we be willing to go, translation of the working? Are we going to are we going to let them forego, you know, for a 30-day period? I would not let somebody forego for more than, you know, 60 days at at most, but I think most of the people, if they use it, if they want it, would probably look at a probably look at some type of 30-day situation where they pay it out, you know, as opposed to if they miss the 10th, you give them the the next 30 days to finish making payment or something along those lines. We can set parameters on that. I I'm with you on that, though. I don't think you want to go too far out. I don't think you want to carry it too far out.
Right. Okay.
I I agree with Amber. I'm the the sales tax piece, I'm I'm in line with it's the, when it comes to rebating impact fees or wastewater fees or waiving late bills and stuff. Like, she makes a great point, you know, that there's more than just the businesses on the hook for that, it's the entire community, so I think I think it makes sense to do the sales tax because they're the ones who contributed, they're the ones going to get it back, nobody's hurt for any less. And I think in the long run, with the sales tax, doing that forbearance fact, you're going to find that you may see, like in any economic situation, a lot of that money return back to your community some fold over a period of time and and get it back either through reinvestment or other actions, so I like that piece there, so.
How do y'all feel about the the building permit piece?
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
So we'll just.
Don, the question I have, Don, is how are all these dollars that are coming out of our pockets, the villagers' pocket, how's that going to impact our bottom line this month, next month? And if this goes on for another four or five months, how would it be impacted?
You know, if if the payout, if if we truly are setting the parameters for the payout, you know, from March to May 1, we we have we have the ability to absorb the $50,000 at this stage of the game. We have a fund balance that that's that's pretty healthy right now, and and, you know, for something like this, you know, I think that type of payout is 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 going to be okay. I don't think it's going to hit us real hard. You start doing this over a period longer than that, I think you're you're dealing with a different ballgame. Trans, like you, keep in mind, we've talked about a potential hit of 200 grand or something or somewhere in that neighborhood, you know, in sales tax over the course of the year, the remainder of the year, depending on how fast the thing comes back. And then, of course, the idea that you could have a repeat, you know, and and in another way that we start getting spiked, because that's one of the things to keep in mind that that the governor's new strategy on on dealing with this, up to this point, it's been a, it literally has been a forest fight, you know, it's it's a forest firefight, you know, we we you've been battling, you know, a statewide issue. What they're going to do now is they're going to start tackling hotspots as opposed to fighting a statewide fire. And so, you know, they're and when they fight those hotspots, they're going to come and shut communities down that have major league spikes, instead of what they're doing on a statewide basis, they'll isolate locally. So that's what that's the risky phase. Hopefully, we're not going to be in that in that situation more, but more major metropolitan areas, but I think we can, I I think, Mike, I think we can we can tolerate the $50,000, you know, if that's the payout.
So are we going to be able to, or how are we going to position ourselves to go and and get some of the stimulus money or grants or anything else that maybe the governor's office can provide to support all this, the business development portion of it?
Absolutely. We have been, we have been, we've been in communication with with Representative Buckley. Also, we've been in communication with Congressman Carter's office. The next, the next bill that's expected to come out of Congress as far as relief goes is supposedly going to be earmarked for state, county, and cities, and it's intended to try to bridge the gaps for them. There's still arguing over how much that is and what truly all is going to be involved in that. Up to this point, everything that's been released through the CARES Act has been targeted towards businesses and small business and those type of things. There's also going to be some stimulus money out there for public infrastructure projects, which we can talk a little bit more about later when we get into budget discussion, but, yeah, we're we're they're very well aware of our needs and they're very well aware of our projected shortfalls, and we're just waiting to see what comes out of DC as far as that goes. TML, the National League of Cities, they're working very aggressively to try to get a maximum allocation of the federal funds that does not choke out smaller cities. Up to this point, the the relief funding that's come down for cities has been mainly to help fund hospitals, has been mainly to help fund police, fire departments, those type of things, in communities greater than 500,000 people. We're not there, you know, and we're one of the small guys, and and they're aware of the fact that there are a number of small cities that are going to be facing some extremely difficult financial situations, depending on how long this this wears on.
But we also have to remember that.
And and come up and identify and agree upon as a group what those two priorities are. You know, we use our long-range planning that we did at the beginning of the year and kind of use that as a tool, but I think we need to get that list in order and have it ready in case they come out with some stupid idea like shuttle-ready projects and stuff
Amber?
Hi.
Um, Mike?
Hey.
Rodney?
Yay.
John?
Yes.
Frank?
Yay.
I have trouble hearing and distinguishing between yay and nay. Don, how'd that vote come out?
Unanimous.
Pardon?
Unanimous?
Okay, that's fine. I think from from here on out, we're going to use yes and no. That would really help. All right, now then, the next thing on our agenda is to discuss and consider possible action regarding the continuation use of the virtual meeting format for Salado Board of Alderman meetings.
Yes, sir. This this item is on the agenda to allow you all to give us some guidance on on how we want to proceed in in at least the next few weeks, if not maybe the long term. Up to this point, as you know, we've kind of settled into Zoom. Tonight, we got through our technical issues in the beginning, it worked out actually pretty well, but and it's worked out well so far, but again, we're emerging out into a more open business economy, community are beginning to reopen. So our question to you is, do y'all want to continue to proceed virtually for at least another meeting or two, or are you interested in in beginning to move back into a face-to-face environment? The one thing I would offer from a staff standpoint is, I think we've had some pretty good luck with these Zoom meetings as far as citizen involvement, and, you know, I think it would be a good idea if we even could do it to incorporate the Zoom structure into our face-to-face meetings to the point where those that want to join us this way still have the ability to join us this way even though we're doing it face-to-face. I will tell you that I feel confident that the six-foot distancing provisions are going to be strongly encouraged for several weeks to come, and it's very difficult for us to distance on the dais. We could maybe tier you all and put three down below and three up top and still be able to mic those and 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 hold the in-person meetings. We're still going to need to distance, I believe, the chairs, which is going to limit your seating capacity in the meeting rooms. It really is up to you all how you want to proceed as far as whether you want to continue to Zoom or meet in person and then take you back Zoom on top of that.
Well, if this is cool, if we've if we've got to maintain six feet apart still, and I miss you all greatly, I really, really do, we should continue virtual.
For all meetings?
For the foreseeable near future until things lighten up.
Who knows when that's going to be?
Questions, please, to Don concerning this?
Could this be like a a question that that we just kind of keep on the the rotating agenda, like, say, the first meeting of every month, we just bring it back up and kind of re-discuss it?
Good idea.
Fill it out.
Sure.
Other questions, please?
Well, Don, the the question that I have is that I feel like we're being pretty effective with the virtual Zoom meetings that we're having, and the only issue that I have is that we do not have a way for the public to really give us good feedback and comments, and is there a way that we can improve these meetings for the public and just easily jump in there or do the three-minute presentation at the front or at the end of each subject or something? But that's that's the one thing I think we're really missing to vote on is getting public input.
I think we have the ability to do that. Zoom has features that we could play with that would that would allow that to happen. There are some communities that, as as they do these meetings, they're encouraging individuals to send in at least a notification that they have a comment and would like to address the board during the meeting, or actually, they send in the written comments ahead of time, and and they're circulated and even read in read into the record itself. So I think there's some ways we can do that to 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 make it certainly more public, public-friendly, if you will.
Hey, Don, could we get an article in the newspaper right up front saying that we encourage your input and please dial in?
Sure, sure.
I think we need to do that.
We had a little, you know, we had a little hitch in the meeting ID numbers I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting today, but absolutely, and we still have, I think, we had a bunch in there at one point tonight, so, yeah, we certainly could do that, John.
Thank you.
Any other questions, please? I'll consider, I'll consider a motion, please.
Motion to leave this, as Amber mentioned, on the standing agenda once a month to continue with our virtual meetings until further notice.
Sure.
I second that.
Discussion has been, is open now?
Question?
Question has been called. All in favor? Say yes.
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 Opposed? Opposed? Same? Carries unanimously. D. Discuss and consider possible action regarding a proposal to use a sole authorized provider for residential and commercial solid waste and recycling services. Almost two or three times a year, we have a discussion about how could we keep our roads and not have to spend so much money? And someone said, well, big trucks, you know, has come down, and we can't stop that. Another person said, well, you know, we have two huge garbage trucks that come. Is there a possibility that we could combine the route and just have one garbage truck? There has been no indication of which garbage business would be done away or would be selected. So talking to Don, we decided that we will present this, I'm not sure it would be the last time it will ever be presented, right? Put it on the, put it on the board agenda and see what the feelings are and if there is any consideration for this. Will entertain questions, please?
Yeah, this is cool. You know, I'm going to get into this earlier. I think if you go to one garbage company, he's going to double up on his trucks and you won't see any change in traffic. I say we leave it alone.
Is that a question?
No, that's just a statement. I think we need to leave this alone.
I'm being very kind to y'all. I should have stopped you many times with discussion before the question was called. I mean, before the second was received, but didn't happen. So questions, please, regarding this?
Hey, Don, have we have we got any input from any of the citizens on this? What did it say?
Yes, sir. We received several emails, which I forwarded to you all this morning and this afternoon, and all of those emails were opposed to any change in the current system.
I will entertain a motion.
Motion to disapprove.
It's your second. Motion is made and seconded. Now discussion.
Question?
Question has been called. All in favor? Say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Can we clarify what we're in favor of? I hear we're in favor of not moving forward, right?
Right.
I mean, let's double negative this and diagram it on board and see what it looks like.
Just say if if the positive, don't double negative motion.
Yeah, that's.
Kind of different, isn't it? Okay.
I just want that clarified because it's.
Let me do this again, please, so we'll let it down. If you are, the motion, as John presented it, say yes.
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 Yes, yes.
If you are opposed, say no. The motion fails.
No.
Motion passed.
No, the motion, the motion.
Pardon?
The motion passes.
Yes. Oh, you're right. Yes, yes. Yes, you are so correct. E. Discuss and consider issues relating to the potential future expansion of the Village of Salado wastewater system.
Mayor, this this particular item is a workshop item as as the next item on the budget to to kind of gather some input from you all and let you all talk about your thoughts and feelings, not me talking about my thoughts and feelings. And and it's it's a, this particular situation is is something we put on for workshop because we have about $711,000 right now that remains in our bond funds, leftover funds from construction of the wastewater system via treatment plant and collection system.
Oh, you're right, yes, yes. Yes, you are so correct. E, discuss and consider issues relating to the potential future expansion of the Village of Salado wastewater system.
Mayor, this, this particular item, uh, is a workshop item as, as the next item on the budget, to, to kind of gather some input from you all and let you all talk about your thoughts and feelings, uh, not me talking about my thoughts and feelings, and, and it's, it's, uh, this particular situation is, is something we put on for workshop, uh, because we have about seven hundred and eleven thousand dollars right now that, uh, remains in our bond funds, uh, leftover funds from, uh, construction of the wastewater system, the treatment plant and collection system. Uh, we have about, if you factor in the estimated cost on the odor control system, uh, we have a couple of other connection projects that we're obligated to follow through with, uh, for various reasons that we talked about. Uh, for example, uh, there, there's a line that needs to be moved off of, uh, Federal Lane, uh, that is in conflict apparently with private property. Uh, we've got a, a dispute between two property owners, uh, relating to the location of their connections and the original design. There was a question about the property line location that's going to require us to, to, uh, put another cap in to, to avoid conflict. We've got the Royal Street odor control system, and then, of course, we've got the Tejaso deal, the deal with the Old Town Tap, that we saved a significant amount of money on, but we still need to make that, that connection and the easement that you approved. We've got about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars worth of, uh, obligated projects that we need to move forward with, and that includes those I just mentioned, uh, which leaves you with the, still a pretty good chunk of change, uh, to, to spend, and, and that money can be spent, uh, really in, in a couple of ways. It could be spent and it could be thrown all towards debt service reduction, maybe throw towards debt reduction, uh, in other words, uh, buying down, um, you know, the, the debt service rate, uh, on, on the taxes, uh, but it also can be spent on, on expansion projects if that's your desire to do that. And, uh, we, we've talked about a number of those, our policy up to this point, uh, that, that you all have, have worked and lived by, has been the fact that any expansion of the system really needs to be the obligation of, uh, the individual requesting service. Uh, translation, if you had a project outside of town and you wanted wastewater service, uh, we would extend it at your cost, uh, and you, of course, would also have to annex into the village. Uh, but that said, there are a number of, uh, opportunities for expansion, expansion that are relatively affordable, uh, that, that might, you know, make quick work of bringing some people into the city and potentially increasing, uh, tax base, uh, which means potentially lessening the burden on the existing tax base, uh, with, with additional tax base coming in. Um, and those projects, um, you know, are something we want to put before you and get your thoughts on, on, on how you want to deal with this extra money. Uh, let me run through a couple of cost estimates that've come up for you, uh, as far as potential expansion projects. So, one of those, uh, would be what I would call the I-35 West extension, uh, and that particular extension would be the extension of a low-pressure, uh, service line that would basically serve those properties from Sonic all the way to Robertson. Um, and that project is estimated to cost somewhere in the neighborhood of design engineering and construction, somewhere in the neighborhood of about two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, uh, give or take. Then there's the I-35 East expansion, and this is a combination four-staying gravity line. Uh, this goes all the way to the Holiday Inn. Uh, it would incorporate, they would bring in the library, uh, basically from the library all the way to Holiday Inn and all of those properties in between, not including Hidden Glen, not including that subdivision. That cost would be somewhere in the neighborhood of about 1.3, 1.4 million dollars. Um, so, that idea is out there. Brooksher Brothers, uh, to be able to extend down Salado Plaza Drive and to bring in Salado Plaza, to bring in Brooksher Brothers, to bring in the office building, uh, potentially to bring in the Waterfly Corporation and bring in some of those residences across the street from, uh, the Salado Plaza Shopping Center. Uh, that cost of that line is only about seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, based on the latest assessments we've received. And then there's a Rock Creek extension, which is the extension of a low-pressure line to basically go down and serve, um, to go down and serve, uh, those businesses on the north side of Rock Creek. The Barton House is already connected, uh, he wanted to do his own connection, but this would facilitate those businesses on the north side of the creek, and the cost of that is about a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. I want to caveat these numbers real quick as you look at these, and that is, on, on those low-pressure extensions, uh, there are pump costs involved in those, there are grinder pumps involved in those, uh, many of those are duplexes, which are more expensive. Uh, to this point, the policy the village has taken regarding the provision of grinder pumps on low-pressure lines is the village provides those. In this extension environment, you may choose to do something differently, you know, as far as that. If you're going to extend the line for them, since they're not going to be paying for the extension, if you choose to go that route, uh, maybe what you say is they're responsible for the grinder pump cost, and that could bring down the numbers, uh, from a construction standpoint, pretty, pretty big. Example, you know, would be, uh, you know, uh, that, that, uh, the, the Sonic extension, that's probably going to bring your numbers down, uh, into the lower two hundreds, you know, if you look at that, uh, from the standpoint of, of, of the pumps. Uh, the Rock Creek extension, it'll, it'll come down considerably because you're talking about several grinder pumps in that, too. Uh, Brooksher Brothers, you know, would deal with that, uh, you know, so, so that, that's a line extension cost on that deal, so, uh, just, all of those projects combined equate to about 1.8 million dollars, um, you know, as far as available projects, with the big one being obviously the line going all the way to the Holiday Inn. If you choose to just want to do the library and not go all the way to Holiday Inn, uh, we, we've got an estimate of that, and, and the cost for a low-pressure extension, a wood grinder pump is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of about seventy-one thousand dollars. A gravity extension would be probably closer to a hundred and thirty-five, just because you're having to traverse that intersection, um, which is significant. So, um, you know, if you wanted to just go to Sonic, it's, it's fifty-seven thousand dollars, you know, uh, our thought process is if you go Sonic, it makes sense to go further on, but again, that's your, your thought process is, is what counts, not mine. So, I, I talked to that tonight just to kind of get your feelings and to see if you can give us some guidance and direction on how you want to, how you want to spend it, uh, or if you want to spend it right now. I, I do strongly suggest you look at spending it. I, there, there is a, uh, obviously down the road at some point, there's going to be a need to expand the treatment plant. Uh, you're two hun, you're ten hundred thousand right now, you've got the ability to go up to three hundred, uh, as we've discussed in the past on several occasions. Uh, we did some overbuild on the treatment plant to try to lessen the cost of that expansion if and when that comes. Uh, general estimates are going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of about a million bucks, uh, to expand that up to, uh, up to three hundred thousand gallons, uh, much cheaper than it would have been had we not done some of the overbuild in this, this time, so, uh, that's something to think about, but, but again, you're going to have impact fees, you're going to get impact fees off of sanctuary, you're going to have impact fees off of Drake's Landing that we talked about. If there are other developments coming in, there are impact fees that can go towards plant expansion and, and then those type of things. Um, I just want to know your feelings on, on how you'd like to proceed with this. Do you, do you want to look at doing some expansion on our part, or do you still want to require folks to pay for the expansion on their end?
Is there, uh, um, any situation where any of those areas where people, um, or businesses might want to cost-share it with us so that we could go a little further with our money?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think there are, that the gentleman at Sonic has expressed interest, uh, on, on paying for his extension, uh, but, you know, I, I think that the key thing on that deal, Amber, is going to be the fact that whatever direction you head, that you head fairly, and, and that you, that you're consistent in, in how you extend. You don't do one deal differently for somebody else. Um, so, yeah, I mean, cost-sharing is a very real possibility, because up to this point, keep in mind, our discussions with folks about expansion, up to this point, have related solely to the fact that they're responsible for paying the cost. But I can tell you, the library is very anxious to get connected, Sonic's very anxious to get connected, Fairway Golf is very anxious to get connected, the convenience store is very anxious to get connected, Holiday Inn is very anxious to get connected.
Right. Hey, Don? I think the big part of that needs to, like, we need to review, you know, the tax implications. I mean, we don't just expand to expand, but, um, we may cost-share if we look at over time how much, you know, tax revenue we're going to be bringing in because we're expanding that system, and that's our justification. And so, I just think that it's really prudent that we look at that and, so that we can at least, we can justify that, because if we're just going to, to spend half a million dollars going to a private residence, never going to, we're never going to recoup those funds, then I'm not for that. But I think that if we can prove that we're going to be recouping those funds at some point through tax revenue, you know what I'm saying? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I, I do, and it's interesting you bring that up, because I ran some, I ran some figures looking at just that very issue the other day, and, and, uh, for example, the, what we call the I-35 West expansion to bring Sonic all the way to Robertson's end, uh, that would add probably an additional 1.8 million dollars to your tax base, uh, which obviously means that, you know, less, less burden on the existing tax base, and if you look at the I-35 East expansion project, that's going to add in somewhere in the neighborhood of about 5.4 million dollars. So, with just those two side extensions, you're looking at potentially adding, you know, eight million dollars in taxable value, uh, to your tax rolls, so, there, there's a plus in that. Because everyone of those guys is going to be paying, everyone of those guys is going to be paying towards debt service on wastewater in addition to maintenance and operation costs.
Don, what did you say was the, what did you say the amount was available?
Seven years, it's going to be, uh, let me give you the exact amount, Rodney, hang on a second. I've got two mouses I'm going to play with here. Seven, eleven, one eighty-six.
It's eight thirty.
So, under a million dollars?
Yes.
But the expansion up to the Holiday Inn is over a million, right?
Absolutely, four. And those, and those individuals, uh, there, uh, at least one of the parties is still involved. We, we've had discussions over, over the last couple of years with them, uh, about the idea of them, you know, putting money upfront and paying, and there was interest in doing that. I don't know if one of those individuals still owns a significant piece of property up there, but I know that the owners of the Holiday Inn remain the same, and they're interested in maybe potentially cost-sharing, but they're also interested in that type of situation of looking at tax basements as part of, from the agreement, as part of some agreements, and, uh, we told them that we cannot cut agreements for separate rates for them, uh, you know, that we have the ability to work with them on impact fees, and we have the ability to work with them, you know, on, on, on other types of issues like that that could go into a 380, but, uh, they, they were going as far in our discussions with them as saying that they wanted discounts on their rate, they didn't want to pay impact fees, that they were going to pay the cost of expansion out. Um, and keep in mind, if, if they pay, if they pay to expand, we only have the ability to collect the treatment portion of an impact fee, not, not the collection system portion.
And if we ran to Brooksher's, we'd run behind the retail shops? Is that correct?
Yeah, sure would. No, what we need to do is run right down the middle of Plaza.
That's our idea.
And break, and break their, break their driveway, like we're getting our street broken up, right?
Exactly.
The, the thing is, is if we're, we're laying, laying that kind of system, expecting the people, you know, the businesses to connect and their impact fees, they could probably handle, the people living across the street in those residential houses, I'm not so much sure they could fight off that kind of impact fee.
Well, that, that's the question I had, Rodney. The question I had is like, if, uh, Fairway, uh, wants to, and I'm using them as an example, if Fairway wants to get on our system and we go right past Sonic, are they required to get on our system, uh, is that, is that law still applying?
Yeah, it would.
Okay?
Go ahead.
So, if we put a line down, uh, Plaza, I, you know, all the Plaza shops would have to get on it, and Brooksher's, you know, who go all the way to Brooksher's, but the ones across the street aren't really required, would they be?
No, they, i- ideally, the way, the way that works, if your property is located within a certain distance of that line, you're obligated to connect, and, and I think, I think if you ran that thing right down the middle of Salado Plaza, then the distance from those homes probably may not, may not work, we'd have to look, but the logistical place to put that line is in your right-of-way, and that's, that's the key, and, and, you know, you'd work that thing. Now, I, I'm not suggesting this, but, you know, we, because we, we, we kept this case before, but, you know, those are existing improvements, and the position you've taken with the existing improvements on Main Street with the wastewater system, my guess is you might be able to interpret the same to apply for impact fees regarding these individuals. Uh, obviously, if, if, if Fairway comes in and wants to expand their golf cart facility afterwards and they will pay an impact fee potentially on how they expand, but you might be able to take that position, you know, to address some of your concerns regarding the impact fees, if you want to do that. I mean, it's.
So, if we go to the library, we're going to tear up a perfectly good sidewalk in this lane, right?
Uh, probably, yeah, it probably would, probably would, and potentially a street that's going to go over-lating.
Yes.
Hey, hey, Don?
Yes.
This is cool. Um, is, is our Economic Development Council up and running now?
Well, they're fixing to start meeting. You appointed one tonight.
Okay, good. My point is, we, we have been, we've heard the word economic development over and over and over again tied to this sewer system. I think we should let them do their work and not do their job for them, and they report back to us on what we should and should not do.
Okay.
Well, Don, the question I have is, is really the question that we're looking at here is, do we, is it best to spend our seven hundred thousand dollars on, on connecting new customers and building up our tax base, or is it better to take that seven hundred thousand dollars and pay off, uh, part of our bond, uh, requirements? Do we have actually what that's going to do to that, to sixty-four percent that, uh, we're using out of our tax dollars to operate the system?
Oh, I mean, you're, you're, you're generally, that, that, it's close to being years, a year's worth of your payments, if, if we think back to those numbers I'm not speaking. Uh, so, you know, it, it would have, it would have a, again, we, as we talked about with the impact fee piece when we set the tax rate last year, is it a one-time hit, or do you want to spread it out over a period of years? And so, you know, Mike, you can, you can bring it down a little bit, spread it out over a period of years, or take a significant chunk down, but the problem is the next year it potentially goes up. So, we can run some numbers for you to get an idea of, of how you can spread it. You could even split this up and put some of that towards debt reduction, some of that towards those projects, you know, and, 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 and look at it that way. I mean, it's, that's doable. Rodney, let me jump back to your question real quick. Uh, you know, I, there's not an issue on the sidewalk, because we can bore that sidewalk very easily, so, it's, it's not a, that's not a big issue at all as far as that goes. So, I wouldn't let that give you concern. My concern would be, you know, uh, the, the cost estimates that we've gotten at this stage of the game, uh, relate to frontal, uh, passage of the interstate on the east side, and, uh, that cost estimate could potentially change if for some reason Tech Stop balked and doesn't let us go up their right-of-way on the highway on the front of your side, uh, and if we have to start going behind homes, obviously, going hill and dale's a little bit more expensive. But the library, the library, the library would be a very easy board to get to, so I wouldn't worry about that.
Don, when you mentioned the eight million dollar, that increase in, uh, ad valorem value?
Yes.
All properties are not in the city limits now that you were doing on that?
No.
Really, the only one we're talking about would be the Holiday Inn, correct?
Going out?
Well, what I'm talking about, some of those properties are already in the village, correct?
Right. There are, there are all those property, they're handful of properties on the east side there are, but they're not high-value property. That five, that five point one million dollars, I'm going to say eighty percent, ninety percent of that value is the Holiday Inn.
Okay, but then you had an eight million when you brought in the other side. Are those properties out of the village as well that you're talking about, or are they in the village?
They are, they, they are outside. Sonic is outside.
So, if the first thing we did then was to require them to come into the village, and we split the cost with everybody to fifty-fifty proposition, if that's eight million dollars, that's four hundred thousand dollars a year in tax revenue based on just fifty cents.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, you get your money back in two years, and you've got that much more money going towards the debt reduction. So, in, in two years, we're going to get back what we put into this.
I would, and, and Frank, you are absolutely right. I would totally agree with you. My only concern is in two years, somebody would come back and go, "Oh, we got four hundred thousand dollars in our pocket, where am we going to spend that?" It's not going to go back to the taxpayers who funded the projects to begin with.
No, the four hundred thousand, the four hundred thousand I'm talking about is tax revenue we're getting in that will go to pay down the debt.
That's what, that's what it did, unless somebody goes out and says, "Hey, let's go ahead and fund another project."
Well, the, the part, the part of that tax, and I just see it as fifty is around a number of fifty cents, because that's going to just that, but remember, part of that has to go to the debt. The only, nineteen cents of that goes to the, to the operating fund, the rest of it goes to retiring the debt. But even from an investment point, from that, you could say, "Okay, it's three and a half, three point eight years before we really see our money back." But at the same time, it's lowering everybody's debt relief tax.
If we take the seven hundred thousand? If we take the seven hundred thousand and, uh, just put it against the bond, we don't get any, uh, payback on it, uh, forever, at any time.
I mean, you lower the rate for as long as that money lasts, which you did in pieces. If you did a hundred thousand a year, I mean, you're, for every, basically, what, twenty thousand, we're lowering it a penny? Or is it, it's more than that, isn't it, Don?
Well, I, yeah, I, and I don't, I don't think you're generating four hundred thousand off that eight million.
Well, I just rounded it off to point oh five oh. Fifty cents? I know our rate's higher than that now. I just did, I just ran it through the calculator. Are you thinking that's only forty thousand?
Yep.
That can't be right. On eight million?
It's seven, it's, it, he, he's just, just doing it. He got... Seven point two million dollars. And you're gonna divide that down by a hundred. So you do seventy-two, seventy-two thousand times, let's just say point five seven, because that's our rate. Okay?
Three hundred and seventy-five.
Forty-one, four sixty-five.
So you're saying forty-one thousand?
Yeah. And of that, just factor that in, what do we figure? Sixty-four percent of that is, is, uh, sewer debt.
Yeah, that could come down a little bit.
I think it's gonna, it'll bring, uh, any of it, and, and keep in mind, you've got, at the same time, you're dealing with a hundred and fifty-four lots that I think are gonna come to fruition pretty quick, maybe over a two or three-year period out there at Drake's Landing. Uh, from, from talking with them as far as their timing goes, I think at least maybe three, maybe five years about, so, but probably three years, you're gonna see the bulk of that done. And depending on what the value of those homes is, if they're two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in value, just factor in the twenty percent home state exemption, you're, you're gonna be seeing some additional tax value there, too. I, I think you're gonna see with some of this additional development coming in, that, that, um, you're gonna see some pretty good relief.
And I think that it would be very prudent of us to spend a little bit of that money to buy five or ten acres of land. Land is not going to get cheaper. It's gonna get more expensive. So if we had to build something on the west side, we would have already had the land. Or if we never wanted to do that, we could make some profit off the land. So I, we've been talking about this for a long time, and I think five, ten acres would be a wise investment.
Don, we can't use bond money to purchase additional land, can we?
You know, I'd have to go back and read the covenant, but if it's related to the wastewater system, you might be able to do that. If it's, if it's to benefit the wastewater system, you might be able to do that, yes. I can, I'll brief that issue on the covenant, but I think there's a possibility you could.
I don't think so. I think that, uh, with what Rodney was saying, that the, uh, the low hanging fruit is something that we need to pursue, like Sonic at fifty-seven thousand. Uh, the, uh, Brookshire Plaza, seventy-five thousand dollars, that's, that's some stuff that I think we have partners who are ready to go and, and willing to partner with us on it, right? And we don't have to spend, uh, spend that whole thing. They can spend some, you know, it's gotta be a good negotiations, but what we want is, we want partners that are, are, are ready to, uh, uh, partner with us and make sure that this happens.
What is your feeling about, let me ask you this, what is your feeling about, and I'll research that bond issue for you, Mike, on that deal? It's a good question. There are options out there, but, uh, what is your, what are y'all's feelings on the, on the concept of impact fees? Because in the negotiation process, obviously, that's an issue that's gonna come up. And, and so, do you wanna treat them the same way you treated the initial customer base? And, and, and not charge an impact fee on existing improvements? And I say that in this sense, and that is, if I'm going to business A, and I'm telling him, he's, he calculates that as an impact fee of forty thousand dollars, but I'm also saying, hey, I want you to split that seventy-five thousand dollar extension to me, you know, and, and you're gonna say, well, that's another forty-five, so you're hitting me for ninety thousand dollars. You know, uh, what are y'all's thoughts on that?
I think it'd have to be, uh, individual, um, negotiations with each property owner. It shouldn't be just a set, because you're gonna have different conditions. Some people's gonna have huge impacts that are unaffordable, and some of them might not.
I, I personally would not like to see us charge the impact fees to existing businesses. They're already there and paying a property tax to the city.
I agree a hundred percent, Rodney.
You're gonna get your money back following down the road. You're gonna get it back through, and, and I think, uh, taking a piece of what Mike said, though, is getting them to partner with us. In fact, if they are part, if they are partnering with us, then they're already shelling out some money to begin with to get the line there. And in the long run, that benefits us all, all the way.
It's negotiable.
The white pile.
Don, have you heard enough to have the direction?
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Uh, wanna go back and read the bond covenants on the bond question about the land deal. Uh, I can tell you that the desired intent of the land deal would be, we have enough people right now knocking on our door about the website developments that, in fact, one of them actually called us and said, do we want some land for a wastewater plant? But I, I think there's some active negotiation opportunity on a couple of those developments on the website to avoid us going out and having to buy land, but I'll research that issue. The, the idea of the impact fee, uh, you know, I think it's something to look at, uh, you know, as far as, you know, I've gotten, I've gotten some good impact on that, uh, as far as how to deal with that. The negotiation idea is, is, is good. Uh, you know, I, I don't think these guys are asking for free extensions. I think that, that if we come to the table with them and say we'd like to partner with them, I think that's something that there might be some, some excitement on. I think the thing to keep in mind about, about this, and that is, we, we've said this before, and that is, the more customers we get on this system, the more opportunity to recover excess revenue to go towards debt reduction through our, through our monthly wastewater bills. Uh, you know, we talked about the fact that right now our bills are set at a certain level of cover of operating costs. As more people come on board, you could potentially lower those rates, or you could take the excess revenue that you would, you'd be swapping on lowering rates, take that excess revenue and roll that towards debt reduction. So that's another component, uh, to help bring, bring debt service rates down, which has been kinda y'all's priority. So, uh, yeah, I've got some good...
That's why we need sanctuary, get off their butts, start building some damn houses.
I'm, I'm, I'm with you, I'm with you a hundred percent on that. So I've gotten some good input, Mayor, and I think, I think that gives us an opportunity to develop some plans to move forward, which we'll bring to you and get your formal authorization on before we go on it.
Okay, what, what, what I heard on this, what I heard on this is that we're gonna look and see if land is possible. We're gonna look at seventy-five thousand dollars for Brookshire slash Plaza. We're looking at the hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for the library and the fifty-seven thousand dollars for Sonic as low hanging fruit. We're gonna pursue that.
Just Sonic, just Sonic and not the full Sonic to Robertson?
Correct.
Okay. Is that everybody's thought?
Sound good.
Yes.
And if, and if...
Can I probably, can I probably go real quick, though? Uh, I, I agree with Mike, just a Sonic, but I would like to know what the extension is on pass there to Robertson. And what's that look like if we did take that, that, you know, a little bit further? I think the more we begin to get towards running that line down to twenty-four eighty-four, which we may have to do somewhere somehow along the way, I think just knowing that delta though, I, I think, I think we go to Sonic and then we know what the delta is to get to the next level.
Excellent. Yeah, and I, and you can take the fifty-seven thousand out of that two eighty-three number to get you to know the difference between Sonic and Robertson's. And then we can also get you a cost estimate to actually run a little pressure up to twenty-four eighty-four. We know what the cost of a, a force main will be for that. But, uh, as far as it's...
Question. Why are we wanting to just access the library? Like, what's the point there? The reason I ask is 'cause they are a taxing entity. They have, they have as much money as the village does. Why would we want to cost share something to the library where we're not actually making a lot of tax? Or, you know, we're not getting money back from that instead of going across the other ro, side of the road and going down to get, bring in more businesses?
Well, the library's been very vocal about coming onto our system, and they do have the money. Now, whether we cost share or not, you know, that's, that's for Don to decide and to work out with them.
Okay.
But I'm like you, you know, they...
They wanna come on and they can pay for it.
Exactly.
And, and, and they're aware, up, up, up to this point, up to this point, those discussions have been the facts that they're gonna pay for.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think, uh, as Don brought it up, the person who, uh, owns land on the project road going toward Holiday Inn, I think he might be open to do some bargaining with us on that, if you wanted to take it to the Holiday Inn. That is a big might, but there is a possibility.
Well, Mayor, what I'm hoping that this whole workshop generates is that some pe, businesses out there pay attention to this and know that we're wel, willing to extend our sewer system and that they call Donna tomorrow and say, hey, how come I wasn't included, and here's what I bring to the table? So, uh, you know, that's what I'm really hoping comes out of this, uh, this discussion.
I think that is very good, Mike, and I certainly agree with that. I think another thing that we probably should be thinking about is should we write a letter to businesses that we would like to have in Celado and just say, we're growing? We are expanding, and might you be interested in talking with us about bringing a business here, your business? What do you think about that? But that gives you something to process for another time. We've got one more piece of agenda that we need to talk about. Uh, it's the addendum. Don, do you want to continue on with the addendum?
Yeah, I, you know, we, we talked, uh, a couple of weeks back, we talked about our COVID on our budget. Uh, just to refresh your memory, we're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of about a two hundred and forty, two hundred and forty-four thousand dollar hit of revenue. Uh, and we talked about, uh, some of the immediate actions we've taken from a staff standpoint internally. Uh, and we talked about some, uh, other, uh, potential future actions that, that need to be thought out and discussed. And, and I wanted to get your, your thoughts on, on, on that particular situation, if we find ourselves in a situation of, of having to look beyond just the, uh, the, uh, initial non-expenses, the hiring freeze. Again, we're trying to avoid hitting fund balances if all possible. Uh, you, you wanna try to keep that as, as healthy as possible, and that we have other types of disasters, natural disasters, those type of things. Doesn't mean you can't tap it, but I mean, just, just keep in mind it's, you know, once it's gone, from there it's gone. Uh, and we have to build it back up again. But the other actions we've talked about, just to get your thoughts, but, uh, we talked about, you know, reducing or restructuring some of our overtime expenses, uh, which are not great right now. Uh, we talked about across-the-board percentage cuts in expenses, you know, do we wanna go and just say, cut your expenses by ten percent across the board? You know, to get to that point, we've already taken the steps, we're looking at, uh, trying to privat, privatize some of our services to avoid some of the costs that come with employees. We've done that with some of our public work stuff and are easing into that right now, and we should see savings on a monthly basis from that. Uh, we've talked about using undesigned fund balances for one-time critical capital projects, uh, that shouldn't be deferred. Uh, we've already gone in and we, uh, we've negotiated our, our lease agreements for the new patrol vehicles that want, that we won't start making payments until next year on those. Uh, so that should get us through. Uh, and then, of course, addressing costs relating to personnel, uh, and then looking at service levels. Those are some of the things that, that we kicked out for y'all to chew on and think through. Uh, I don't think we're gonna be in a position where we're gonna have to be looking at any type of rip or reduction in force, uh, you know, but again, that's always a possibility that's out there, depending on how long this thing truly does drag on. Right now, we're looking to see things start to come back, uh, late summer, early fall, more than likely. Uh, you know, just, and, and we've been, again, pretty conservative in our projections, but, but, you know, we found that our sales tax projection was, was, uh, more extreme than the reality, which is good. That's good news to have. Uh, but, uh, we wanted to get some input from y'all and let y'all talk through some of these issues, and if you have other ideas. I mean, one of the things we talked about was freezing capital projects, and, you know, I think you've got somewhere from a capital project standpoint, uh, you've got somewhere in, you know, in the neighborhood of about, uh, two hundred, two thousand dollars in capital projects in the general fund budget for this year. Uh, the majority of those mean streets. Uh, so I don't know. It, it's really your discussion tonight. I, what, what are y'all's thoughts?
Let me open it up for discussion. Don, uh, we're going to, to the addendum, the, uh, we're adding that to the agenda. It is number, number eight, discussion in possible action relating to fiscal impact of COVID nineteen on the village of Celado. It's open for discussion.
Well, Don, the, the question I have on this is, is, uh, with the downturn in the businesses and, uh, all the social distancing, uh, are our people that are in the front office, are they still fully engaged and have business, uh, coming in every, every minute? Or, or is there a way that, uh, they need, that we have a plan in our hip pocket that they can have their hours reduced if it's necessary?
Uh, if we have to do that, we can do that, but at this stage of the game, we, we're dealing with a pretty healthy load of phone calls on a daily basis, and the walk-in traffic has picked up a little bit. Uh, municipal court's been down for two months. Uh, it will pick up, obviously. Uh, and, and when it does pick up, things can get kinda crazy, uh, from that end. So, uh, we have a plan. If we have to move in that direction, we can.
Okay, but, but are they actually busy working right now, or, or is there some kind of efficiency there we can gain?
Yeah, right now, they're busy working. We've got a lot of sub, we've got a lot of subdivision activity working right now. And the building permit activity is, it's tapered off, it's tapered off a little bit, uh, but we're starting to see more calls, more inquiries.
Okay, and so we're saying that the two hundred thousand dollars that, uh, is the COVID impacts, uh, you've got a plan on how that's going to come out of our budget? And it's, and it's really going to, uh, not impact the bottom line?
Right. It shouldn't, I mean, realistically, uh, there may be a little bit of a tap in the general fund, fund balance at the end, but, uh, if we, if we attack the capital projects and then pull back on some of those capital projects. One of the things about some of those capital projects, Rodney mentioned it earlier, is, is the concept that somebody could be coming up with stimulus package that we might be able to seize the opportunity on as far as that goes, uh, and, and potentially use some of that money. For example, our capitals, our street project this year at Royal Street, we're still on the books for the county to do that. And if we could somehow be able to get a stimulus funding for, for something like that, we might be able to do an even better job on Royal Street than we were originally planning. Things along those lines, you know, we, we look at from, you know, from a standpoint of that. So I think we can cover a lot of this just through the capital project freeze at this point. Uh, you know, but, uh, uh, the other thing to keep in mind is what federal relief comes down the road in the next sixty days for us, and then, and whether they're gonna potentially recoup all that we potentially lose or a percentage of.
Okay, I'm used to dealing with the federal government with federal funds, and, and some of those, um, get sort of, uh, uh, partitioned off from other funds, but that's not the case in our budget, right? We can move money from one account to the other so we can, uh, have some flexibility on that, correct?
Absolutely, we can. For example, savings coming from the fact we didn't, we didn't hire a public works person. We're not paying benefits and insurance and those type of things. Uh, there's, there's some cutbacks we can do in some of our contracting. Uh, we've minimized our contact with legal, those type of things to try to trim down those expenses. Uh, and, and then when those dollars are spent, we can move those into another part of the budget if needed.
Okay, so we can't cancel a laser show. It's already paid for, right?
Uh, actually, it's not paid for yet, since we've authorized it, but it hasn't been done yet. That, that...
Okay, well, that, that needs to go, that needs to go way down on the list of things that we need to look at.
Is there an ad on that?
Yes, there is.
Okay. Okay.
Thanks, Don. That en, that answered my questions.
Don, you brought, uh, you, you brought up a concern that, that I have. And you're not gonna like my concern because we talk about it a lot. And that concern is this. We don't have a person who we can call upon to help us with any kind of emergency that we have in the community. And you said, yes, that we have saved money by not having that maintenance person. But I also know, Don, that the administrative staff is doing it, a lot of it on your own. In fact, when I asked you the question about monitoring, you said the administrative staff and the police department. I, uh, I worry about the fact that you may not have enough help. And I don't have a suggestion for it because this is talking and discussing how this, uh, how this virus might impact us. But I just wanted to verbally say it's a concern of mine for what you guys try to do and make up slack.
Mayor, I, I appreciate those concerns, but I can tell you, we, it's just part of our job and it's part of our scope, and we all, we all wear multiple hats in this operation. Uh, you know, it is not a large staff, uh, but, but it's a staff that, that accomplishes an awful lot, uh, and we're able to make it work. I will tell you that we do have people to respond in emergency situations, and we have contractors that are on board and will respond to us when we call them after hours if need be, as we did the night of the, the windstorm just a week ago, two weeks ago. Uh, so we, we've got those type of situations. We also have a close partnership with the fire department, uh, as they respond and assist us. So we, we've got some bases covered on that end of it, but I appreciate your concern and, and certainly if we get into a situation where we run into staff and you're gonna, you're gonna hear from us, that we're, we're, we're making, we're making ends meet at this point.
Don, I have, I have a, Mr. Mayor, are you done?
Sorry.
Yeah, I have, I have a couple of questions, Don. Um, I think, I think prioritizing some of those projects, those capital projects, as you, you mentioned earlier, and getting those in line. You know, there are things, no matter how far down the road we are with, like, we were gonna do a, a restroom somewhere in the village. Maybe we hold off on that for a year. Maybe that goes, you know, gets pushed out. Um, I think looking at our, our revenue intake and making sure our expenses doesn't go over that same percentage of revenue intake, be good. Do we, do we have T M L insurance?
Yes, we do have T M L insurance.
Does T M L insurance address pandemic issues at all?
No, it does not. We, we all, we all made that call in the beginning.
Okay, alright.
No, and I think you're, you're so true as far as the prioritization piece goes because, uh, you know, we, we had a, we had drainage project scheduled. And, and, you know, if we were to prioritize, that's something we're gonna need, we, we have our thoughts, but I want your input on that. I mean, what, what are, what are the, what are the priorities that you see in the way of capital? I mean, I can give you a list of those, because again, I think this is gonna be an item I'm gonna put on the agenda from here on out, and I think we just need to. It's kinda like when we do the budget planning process. That's another thing we need to talk a little bit about, too, because this is, we're talking about dealing with the S Y twenty budget right now. So we've got a lot of unknowns that we're gonna have to keep in mind as we head into the twenty-one budget planning process, which we're beginning internally. Uh, no one really knows what the ultimate impact of sales tax is gonna be and how long that lasts and what type of scarring this plays, you know, on that revenue stream, you know, and so it is, it's gonna be a kind of a, an intriguing budget planning process. But I, what I can do is I, I'll break out the capital projects where you circulate that in advance for the next meeting. And then maybe we can sit down and talk, talk prioritization on some of those things and get y'all's thought process on that.
Plans to trial.
Any other discussion on this, please? Don, do you feel comfortable in what we've said? Or do you wanna go into a deeper discussion? Or do you wanna come up with some plans that you would like for us to strongly consider?
Well, I'm, I'm gonna let you all drive this discussion, and, and what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna put, I'm gonna put together the capital project list for you to look at and chew at. We can, we can talk about that in our next meeting, so we can get some decisions made on that, so we can act accordingly. We should have a little bit better feel, hopefully, not next meeting, but the meeting after about what's gonna be coming down from a federal standpoint. Uh, we're just awaiting the details on the stimulus program for roadwork. Uh, but, uh, and just so you know, that's gonna be pretty competitive. Uh, but the good thing about it is, uh, there's money that's gonna be allocated to communities our size as opposed to this half million cutoff that we've been up against up to this point. Uh, so just, we'll continue these discussions in two weeks.
Okay. And any more discussion with Don on this? I have just one question to ask real quickly, Don. I could ask a lot, and you told me the answer to it. But you know, the silver poles that are going up, uh, many people think that that's what the, uh, the new lighting system for, uh, the main street, that that's what they're gonna look at. But that's what, that's not what those poles are, with the ones with blue on top and blue on the bottom?
No, sir, those, those are what are called service poles, and, and attached to each one of those poles is a box, and that's supposed to be your meter box. And those are, that's part of the, the power system that's gonna, uh, link up electricity to those ninety-six poles. So, uh, those are service poles. Uh, and the other poles are decorative, they're, they're antique-looking, uh, and they're dark colored. They're not silver.
Okay. Well, if there's not any other business, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Well, it's done. And I thought for a moment that we were gonna be here another hour or two because y'all were really slow with the adjournment motion. Have a good evening. Take care.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Goodbye.